Okay, the time's six oh two. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. If you're in the room, we have a quorum. All board members present. And at this time, I'd like to stand for the reading of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. This time, we're gonna invite a student to read the vision statement, mission statement, and WISD goals.
The vision statement: empowering and inspiring all students to achieve their full potential. The mission statement: Wimberly ISD is dedicated to excellence in education that fosters a culture of kindness and respect, creates lifelong learners, and empowers students to make a positive impact in their community. We believe that everything that we do should help ensure the success of all of our students. As educators, we maximize class time in an engaging and challenging way. Our teachers are personally invested in our students. Students in Wimberly are committed to community service, and the community supports students in return. A quality public Wimberly ISD education drives the future of a successful Texas. As a district, we strive to meet the needs of the whole child academically, emotionally, and socially. Wimberly ISD provides the foundation to create engaged citizens who will become lifelong learners. All our children, parents, faculty, and staff should be treated with kindness and respect. We are committed to excellence in all we do. Wimberly ISD goals: achieve excellence in education, foster a culture of kindness and respect, create lifelong learners, make a positive impact in our community.
Again, this time, I'd like to move to item two on our agenda, which is our public forum. These comments have been submitted online. They're gonna be read into the record. Some have been recorded in advance, and then some will be read here live. And I'm gonna turn this over to Alan.
So we've got, I don't know the exact number, I did wanna say that there were a couple of duplicate comments. By that, I mean duplicate identical, same person, same exact comment. I deleted duplicates, left the original. Same person, same email address submitted multiple comments. I let both of them be in as long as cumulatively it was less than three minutes so that they had their cool. But you could tell some of them submitted it a week ago and then came in and added something. As long as it was less than three minutes, I let the whole thing from my recording go. So that's something I wanted to add before we...
Appreciate that explanation. That, I think, sounds reasonable.
The next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, we will remind our audience of the Board of Trustees' public comment rules. Persons who wish to present public comments must sign in before the meeting and list his or her name, name of the group that he or she represents, and agenda item. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. With six minutes granted to a person with a translator, a group of five persons or more shall appoint one speaker who will be allowed three minutes for public comments. The same rules will be observed for public comments on non-agenda items with the following exceptions. One, public comments on non-agenda items will only be scheduled for regular meetings of the board. And two, the total time that will be allowed on non-agenda public comments will be thirty minutes. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others. Except for the speaker's student, no other student's name or identity should be discussed. If you have a concern that you would like heard or resolved, please present your concern through the district's grievance policies. Grievance forums can be obtained at the central administration office or on the district's website. Trustees are not permitted by law to respond or discuss public comments. However, the board president may direct a speaker to appropriate administrator for further discussion.
Comment submitted by Ty Ford. I would like for the board to allow parents the right to choose the best course of action for their children, thereby allowing the parents to own the decision about whether or not their children wear masks or face coverings now that the mask mandate has been lifted by the state. Good afternoon, Mr. York and WISD School Board. I wanted to pass along additional links that support the decision to allow parents to make the necessary decision in the best interest of their children. We have already seen how other schools are responding to this and simply ask that the WISD School Board follow suit with a similar recommendation. HTTPS colon backslash backslash twitter dot com slash K view slash status slash one three six nine four one eight two one three nine three nine nine six one eight five six question mark S equals twenty-one. HTTPS colon backslash backslash twitter dot com slash M A Y R A B C one three backslash status backslash one three six nine one three zero four eight four nine six six four nine four two one two question mark S equals twenty-one. HTTPS colon backslash backslash twitter dot com backslash Hallsville ISD backslash status backslash one three six seven eight seven eight nine six eight one nine six six eight five eight three one question mark S equals twenty-one. Please take a moment and review where other school, where other school board leaders are taking a stand to support similar positions. Again, I certainly understand the right of every parent to want to make his or her decision around their, their child. I'm simply asking for the same consideration to be made here. Thank you for the consideration. Comment submitted by Courtney Parker. I believe that all students should have the choice to wear a mask or not. I would really like to see the guidelines modified. Comment submitted by Charlotte Parker. Please allow students to choose to wear a mask or not wear a mask. I am asking the school board to modify the current guidelines and allow students to choose to mask up or not. My name is Charlotte Parker, and I have two grandchildren in your district. Regarding tonight's meeting and the district's recent reluctance to embrace Governor Abbott's decision to rescind GA twenty-nine, I urge you to join the many school districts who have left the mask decision up to the student and parents. Why is fear and unfounded rhetoric still being used to put undue stress on our students' mental and physical health? Why does the district feel it has a better grasp on what is best for citizens than the governor of Texas or parents? Why is the district allowing aggressive and threatening voices to override the right of each family to do what they feel is right for their child in concert with the laws in place? Patience is running thin with citizens being stripped of their rights and held to standards mandated by entities who are disproportionately influenced by a minority of citizens who are driven by fear. I urge you to promote a policy for the district that allows each parent the right to exercise their best judgment for their children. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. It's a personal family decision. Do not usurp the rights of those who have entrusted their children to you. Respectfully, Charlotte Parker. Comment submitted by Shanna Jones. Modify guidelines to allow students slash parents to decide whether or not they should mask up. Comment submitted by DJ. Allow the parents slash students to decide whether to wear a mask or not. Don't dictate one way or another. Comment submitted by Kelsey Berry. If my husband is afraid of heights, but I love roller coasters, I can still ride the roller coaster while he remains in his comfort zone on the ground. He doesn't have to ask me to stay on the ground with him. I feel like you are a brilliant man, and you can deduce what my stance is on masks. Yesterday, I went to Costco. I've been there multiple times in the last year with my children, four and five. I was there yesterday with Harvey, four. I wore a mask despite the lift of the mandate in Tarrant County because I know Costco is strict about masks, and I don't like people to not like me. I was quite rudely approached at the entry and asked if I had a mask for my child. I replied that he was four and he wasn't required to wear a mask even when the mandate was in effect. He went on to tell me their policy is H two. I'm struggling to believe this was the case because, as I previously stated, I've been multiple times to this business before and was completely unaware of the policy. None of this was the problem. The problem for me as a mother to my precious baby is that I was then forced, asked to force my four-year-old to do something he didn't want to do, and that I wholeheartedly believe is not necessary to protect him. I am his mom. I do, in fact, know what is good for the children God gave me. I would never jeopardize their health and safety. I am also a registered nurse and worked at the fourth busiest hospital in the country. I had the education and I believe God-given wisdom to discern what is good for my children in this matter. Please, please do not ask me to send my booger-picking, nail-biting, thinks washing his hands for three point five seconds is fine five-year-old to school with a mask in his mouth, not even correctly on his mouth. If we continue to think these children are protecting anyone from any germs, we are just plain loony. He doesn't want it on. We do not believe for a second it is effective for these kids. Please do not ask me to force my kids to do something they don't want. It breaks my heart to lie to them and say they need it, or tell them we don't believe in it, but we have to do what society tells us. Not a good foundation for a future leader, in my humble opinion. Comment submitted by Nadia Pullen. I'm requesting that we, the parents of WISD students, are able to determine what is right for our family and our family's needs. I feel there is a major barrier in our children's well-being in being forced to continue to wear a mask. The governor did not take away the option to wear a mask. Those who evaluate the benefits of mask-wearing to be higher than not wearing are more than welcome to wear theirs. As for me and my family, we are not high-risk and are not around elderly who haven't been able to get the vaccine yet. I want to keep the community just as safe as my individual family and would decide appropriately if someone close to me had a different circumstance. In that case, I would still not tell anyone else what they should or should not do with their body. The choice should be up to the individuals. Comment submitted by Ellen Frazier. I would like the WISD School Board to allow students, faculty, and staff the choice on whether to wear a mask or not. The COVID Task Force made a plan which included mask-wearing, et cetera, that was approved by TEA, allowing WISD to open fully for the school year. However, TEA has now made it clear that the school board now has the choice to modify the guidelines. I am encouraging you to make full use of your power to modify the mask guidelines. Make mask-wearing a choice, not a mandate. The data shows that the only school in our district without any reported COVID cases is the same school that does not require masks. Wearing a mask is a personal choice. Give the families in your district the choice to make their own decisions. I do not think there is cause to wait until the end of the school year to make this choice available. The students comply in class, but as I know, you are well aware, outside of school walls, masks are few and far between. I encourage you to not wait in the choice out of fear or convenient timing. Now is the time to act. Now is the time to give families their choice. I am thankful that the board has added this item to the agenda. We are all aware of the passionate feels regarding masks. If we take away the emotions and use common sense, the decision becomes more clear. The science says students are not at a significant health risk for COVID nineteen. The science says transmission in schools is primarily adult-to-adult, not student-to-adult. The science shows our only campus without masks is the one with the least cases of COVID nineteen. The science says learning is easier without obstruction. To see facial expressions and social cues, read lips, hear clearly, and express fearlessly freely are imperative for learning. Mandating masks for children who are ninety-eight percent likely to survive a disease they may never even get is not following science. Masked choice is the solution. If a student or teacher feels at risk, they may take measures to protect themselves, including masks, gloves, and face shields. They may also alleviate fear of contagion by choosing synchronous learning. To mandate the masses succumb to the fears of the few is not freedom. Freedom begins and ends with personal responsibility. Please modify the mask mandate for students and return the freedom of choice. Comment submitted by Matt Parker. Freedom is about having the right to choose what's best for you. Masks should be optional. Comment submitted by Monte Parker. In light of the governor's recent order in declining COVID rates, students should not be forced to wear masks in school. Please do what many surrounding school districts have already done and make masks optional for all students. My name is Monte Parker, and I have two grandchildren in your district. Regarding tonight's meeting and the district's recent reluctance to embrace Governor Abbott's decision to rescind GA twenty-nine, I urge you to join the many school districts who have left the mask decision up to the student and parents. Why is fear and unfounded rhetoric still being used to put undue stress on our students' mental and physical health? Why does the district feel it has a better grasp on what is best for citizens than the governor of Texas or parents? Why is the district allowing aggressive and threatening voices to override the right of each family to do what they feel is right for their child in concert with the laws in place? Patience is running thin with citizens being stripped of their rights and held to standards mandated by entities who are disproportionately influenced by a minority of citizens who are driven by fear. I urge you to promote a policy for the district that allows each parent the right to exercise their best judgment for their children. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. It's a personal family decision. Do not usurp the rights of those who have entrusted their children to you. Respectfully, Monte Parker. Comment submitted by Sarah Guerrero. We should have the right to decide what is best for our own children. Masks have detrimental effects on our children's mental health and well-being. My children have experienced headaches, anxiety, and other issues due to this mandate. It needs to be lifted and made optional immediately. Enough is enough. As cases are declining, but other side effects are increasing, such as depression, anxiety, and overdose, it's time to give our kids, teachers, and administrators the choice to wear a mask or not. Again, it is a choice. It is a slippery slope when a governing board decides what's best for an individual family. We have complied for a year. At some point, we need to do what's best for our children. The masks need to come off. The lack of cases in our district, particularly Blue Hole, speaks volumes. Please look past the fear mongering and allow us a personal freedoms. Comment submitted by Shannon Rizer. My children deserve the right to make their own decision about wearing a mask. Let each family and staff member decide what's best for them. Stop silencing our children and let them live again. They are the true sufferers in this epidemic. We will see long-term social effects on them long after the virus is gone. You can set them free today. Comment submitted by Andrea Dubasson. Please make masks optional. Thank you. Comment submitted by Angela Guines. As mandatory mask restrictions are being lifted in Texas, I would like to see the same done for our schoolchildren. Depression, anxiety, and loss of personal connection caused by masks is overwhelming. We should have a right to choose what is best for our own family, both physically and psychologically. I'm not saying that anyone that wants to wear a mask should not. I am simply asking for the power to make a choice for my own children. My family has respectfully complied with mandatory mask-wearing for over a year for the sake of others. Please give us the freedom to choose now. Comment submitted by Amy Guines. I am in favor of free choice for all. I am asking, please remove the mask mandate and leave the decision up to me on what makes me and my family feel safe and comfortable. Comment submitted by Evan Lawrence. Comment submitted by Samantha Cobb. I'm a parent of two students at WISD. We are so thankful for our schools and all of the teachers and staff who have helped shape our children's futures. I am pleading that the board please vote to allow our students and staff to have a choice on masks. Several other school districts across the state have led the way in giving their families the choice on masks. We have quarantined, attended school virtually, and given up on so many milestones in our kids' lives. We have worn masks to help slow the spread, been told to wait for the vaccine, and so on. It's been a year, and it's time to move forward. The children and families of our district are together after school and on weekends. Our high school students are wearing masks in the hall only to take them off once in class. Students are together for sports and extracurricular activities unmasked. We already have a campus operating with mask choice, and it has produced the best outcome in regards to cases and spread. Blue Hole Primary has had the lowest amount of cases in our district. They are also the one school in our district in which no students are required to wear masks. I think most would even agree, our beloved tiny Texans are prolific cootie sharers. Let us use this information provided by our youngest student body to show that masked choice at all our campuses is the right decision. Cases are down, death rates are down, immunity due to exposure and vaccinations is rising daily. Those in fear of the virus or at risk have the choice to wear a mask and distance from others. They can make decisions that are best for their own health. Please give all your students and staff that same choice. This virus isn't going anywhere, and we cannot be expected to wear masks any longer. Our teachers, staff, and admin have tackled unimaginable hurdles throughout these two school years. They are the true heroes at the front lines, doing all they can to give our children a positive and comfortable learning environment in which they can thrive. Relying on teachers and staff to enforce and regulate masks is an unfair burden. TEA has given you, our elected board, the power to decide. Give our families the right to choose what is best for their health. Allow our teachers to focus on what they love, teaching. Give our district mask choice. Comment submitted by Brooke Horn. Most teachers at the high school just want to teach. There are many classes that many students are not wearing masks. Ninety percent of students do not care who wears them and who doesn't. Teachers are still teaching. Our district has put many strategies in place, and they have been successful. One, every classroom has a COVID air filter. Two, every classroom is equipped with hospital-grade wipes and sanitizers. Three, teachers are spacing students out. Four, we still offer remote learning. Five, custodial staff wipe down the halls and high-traffic areas every class period. Our cases are extremely low. The school with the lowest cases always has every single student maskless. Teachers at BHP have not contracted the virus more than any other campuses. Many, many teachers are vaccinated. It is time to offer mask choice at WISD. It is time to follow the other districts who also have low cases that now allow mask Comment submitted by Sophie Guerrero. These masks have caused me to break out all over my face. They have caused an infection. Some of my best friend's anxiety has gone up. Be seen of the masks. The masks caused me headaches and pain. If you want to wear a mask, then great, but I don't, and I do not have the option. I would be so thankful and thank my Lord for all my prayers if this ban would be lifted. Comment submitted by Katie Chesser. Many school districts across the state are lifting the mask mandate. We are requesting to modify the current policy and allowing those students who choose not to be masked to be afforded that right. Comment submitted by Shelley Beck. Let me start off by saying that we, my family, appreciate the mask issue getting put on the school board agenda. This was the main objection for me when I gave my kids the choice to wear a mask or not to school. My biggest goal would be to see these mandates end before the school year ends. Getting back to a normal life starting prior to summer break, complete with camps, fundraisers, and practices, is needed so badly by our kids. From what I understand, all of our teachers and staff that want a vaccination have had that ability to get one. So why can't these mandates be lifted now? If not now, when? If there are still some that haven't completed their vaccination yet and want it, let's give them a little extra time to do so. Set a deadline, something that makes them feel better, and get a date on the calendar for this mandate to end. This is and should always be a personal choice, and I am hopeful that you all would agree and give those freedoms back to us. We have followed the recommendations set forth long enough. Cases are down, vaccinations are available, and other schools all over the state are being the trailblazers and putting their kids first. It's time for us to do the same. As always, thank you for your service. Comment submitted by Stacy Ford. As an educator, a parent, an American, and a Christian, I am watching as our rights are being stripped from us. Our family will no longer sit back and be silenced. There is too much at stake for our children's future. Our family moved to Wimberly as we were in agreement and proud of what the WISD Board has stood up to in the past to protect our children's purity, their mental well-being, and their rights. My family has respectfully and quietly complied with the mandates and the recommendations given by the state, TEA, and WISD. I believe if WISD doesn't lift the mandate and give each Texan the right to choose for their family, we are stripping families of their liberties and their freedoms. By not following and respecting the decision made by our governing state authorities and taking a stance to be rebellious against the leaders of what our, of our state, each one of you are allowing the controlling agenda to take away the rights of our students, teachers, and administrators. I don't envy the job that lies before you. However, we elected you to fight for what is best for our children, and that is what we expect you to do. It may get uncomfortable, but this is what you were expected to do. The silent majority are tired, and we are done being politically correct. We will demand our constitutional and states' rights and be respected. And as of three ten twenty twenty-one, my children will no longer be wearing masks. It is our religious freedom and our individual right to make that choice. We are asking WISD give parents and guardians the ownership over their own children's health, mental well-being, and their future. If you have not read the statistics on the horrific side effects of the masking of children, here are just a few. Wearing a face can cause headaches and reduce oxygen levels. That is a reduction in blood oxygenation. It is known that masks, if worn for hours, can reduce blood oxygenation by as much as twenty percent. And proper oxygenation of the blood is essential for energy, mental clarity, focus, and emotional well-being. Wearing a face mask causes one to rebreath the carbon dioxide that the lungs are attempting to expel. This in turn reduces the immune response, negatively affects cell function, and lowers the amount of oxygen exchange across the membranes. Wearing a face mask can increase your risk of infections. A drop in oxygen levels is associated with an impairment in immunity. Studies have shown that hypoxia can inhibit the type of main immune cells used to fight viral infections. This sets the stage for contracting any infection, including COVID nineteen. This sets the stage for contracting any infection, including COVID-19, and making the consequences of that infection much graver. In essence, your mask may very well put you at an increased risk of infections, and if so, having a much worse outcome. In addition, reduced oxygenation can accelerate cancer growth. These physical side effects do not even begin to touch the tragic mental and emotional side effects that our students are facing: depression, suicide, and anxiety. All for what? This should break your heart. I believe this is a political agenda that our district is playing into at the expense of our children. Today, our family says no more. My children are kind, respectful, and excellent additions to the WISD district. We don't ask for much, except for our freedoms to be respected. Comments submitted by Micah. I'm a 4th grade student at Jacob's Well. I really want to be able to not wear a mask to school. I was excited to get to come back to school at the beginning of the year, but it was scary seeing all the teachers and students covered up. You can tell if someone is sad, happy, or upset because I can't see their face. After coming back to school after Christmas, I am having headaches and feel dizzy when I wear the mask for a long time. I also have a learning disability and need to be able to see people's mouths move to figure out what they are saying. If other kids want to wear a mask, that's okay with me. I just don't feel like I can do my best schoolwork while having my nose and mouth covered. Thank you very much. Comments submitted by Christina Stover. It is my desire for WISD to lift the mask mandate. I want my children to have a right to choose to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. Teachers, administrators of WISD have had the chance to have the vaccine. People should have the right to wear a mask or not wear a mask. Also, no WISD school board member, administrator, teachers, or coaches should ever shame children in their choice of wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. My junior high child has been shamed by numerous coaches and teachers for even having the conversation of freedom of choice. His history teacher/coach has made it extremely clear where she stands politically, and I am outraged. In my understanding, although we know it is, wearing of the mask isn't supposed to be a political stance. It's time for parents, students, to have a choice. Women have the right to have an abortion. We, as Americans, should have a right whether we want to cover our face or not. Comments submitted by Nathan Cross. The mask mandate has been lifted across the state and in surrounding school districts. Why hasn't WISD followed suit? This is an overreach of school board authority and perpetuates living in fear. Even if the mask did work well enough to warrant wearing them all day, there are so many other factors that aren't addressed. For example, all students don't wear clean masks. They handle the masks too much throughout the day or wear them incorrectly altogether. Students come into contact with 100 other things throughout the day that they can contract the virus from. These kids don't stay in their homes outside of school. They play together at their homes, play sports together, go to church together, all without wearing a mask. Masks at school provide no real benefit. All of these requirements and controls for a virus with over a 99% survival rate is unwarranted. As a parent, I want to see the option of choice. The controls you rely on today can remain in place for the staff and parents who chose to remain fearful of the virus. I'll be paying close attention on how you address this. Compared to what decisions lie ahead, this is the easy stuff. I'll be educating and informing everyone that I know about your decision. We'll also be voting accordingly in November. Comments submitted by Cecilia Uzolino. Our students need to be able to enjoy school, friends, and everything that a young person needs in the environment of school without a mask. Thank you for serving and listening. Comments submitted by Kylie Cruzy. Dear school board members, I have felt strongly that I need to share my thoughts about the mask mandate that is currently being enforced throughout the entire Wimberly School District. I have five children, four of which are currently in the WISD schools. We moved to Wimberly three years ago strictly for the exemplary schools and community that Wimberly takes pride in. Our family has flourished here and are grateful for the opportunities our children have been provided with. This has been an impossibly hard year for administrators, teachers, students, and parents. Everyone has been affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are all hurting. Our family has been supportive of any mandates that the school has instilled for the 2020-2021 school year, as we sympathize with board members and administrators who have to make these very difficult decisions. However, after the governor lifted his mandate and the TEA left the final decisions to our school board, we can no longer support the mask mandate. The science and proof of the efficacy of masks is little at best. The CDC provided a research journal on March 5th which correlated the implementation of mask mandates to the drop of case rates in counties with mask mandates. The highest drop of cases was 1.8% over a 100-day period, which really cannot scientifically be proven is because of the mask, but could be due to more social distancing or other mandates put in place. My point is that at best, masks work with such a small percentage that we cannot depend on them to keep us safe. It is a false sense of security and actually increases our risks of contamination or infection as we pull them from our back pockets, set them down on lunch tables, and improperly put on and take off our personal protection equipment. I understand some feel they're safe and feel better about being in public with them. My argument is not that masks should be banned, but that masks should be an option. Whichever the individual feels keeps them safe is the choice of that individual and their families. When given a choice, those who wear the mask will probably be more likely to put on and remove their PPE with proper precautions, and those who don't will feel liberated by this choice. Within my own family, I know that in school is the best place for my children to learn. They are more focused, engaged with peers and teachers, and their grades improved as soon as they started in-person school. It is not fair to force kids to choose between making a choice to put something on their face or they will not be taught in a way that is best for them and has always been best for public education. My family loves living in Wimberly, and we feel like our values and freedoms are respected in this community. We hope to raise our family here as Wimberly Texans and teach them the values that the school implements. But if we do not feel that our values are respected, we no longer have a reason to live here and be a part of the schools and community. Sincerely, Kylie Cruzy. Comments submitted by Haiko Stang. Thank you for hearing my comment. I want to address the board to support keeping the current WISD policy regarding masks in place. We currently have two children in WISD and are directly impacted by your decision. The CDC and other experts agree that masks effectively contain the spread of COVID-19. WISD has so far been successful in keeping schools open while preventing the spread of the virus. Prematurely ending the wearing of masks would jeopardize all our successful efforts and gravely endanger our community. The distribution and the administering of vaccines have made great progress. Continued enforcement of the mask policy and other measures would give us the time we need to emerge from this pandemic. Considering the success WISD had in containing the spread of the virus, we recently decided to send our children back to in-person classes, and we would like to continue to be able to do so. Please retain your current policies concerning the pandemic. Comments submitted by Desmond Cross. I'm in 7th grade at Danforth Junior High School. I am in three of the four honored classes that the school offers. I make straight A's, play football, and participate in track meets. I do pole vault and hurdles. I've never gotten into trouble at school. The only time that the principal and the vice principal talked to me was when I wasn't wearing my mask over my nose. Ever since we have been forced to wear masks, I've had a significant increase in headaches, dizzy spells, and overall discomfort. So I encourage you to vote in favor of making masks optional. Comments submitted by Astrid Schwab. As a parent of two kids in WISD who are back to in-person learning, I urge the board to keep masks mandatory. It is great that infections in Wimberly and Hayes are down from the peak in January and that the number of vaccinated people is increasing. However, there are still new infections every day. It has been shown everywhere that masks are one of the most effective measures to reduce the risk of infection with COVID-19. There are only nine weeks of school left, and mask-wearing has worked well for the past 27 weeks of school. Please keep masks mandatory until the end of the school year. It will help keep everyone at school and in our community safe. Comments submitted by Sidney Cross. I'm a 6th grader at Danforth Junior High. I am an A student, and I never get in trouble. I tried out for the cheer team and am currently in band. However, I do not wear my mask anymore because I believe that they should be optional. I remember when my family had just started going to school in person, almost every day after school, we had to take Advil because we had headaches from wearing the masks all day. We thought this mask thing would go away, but it didn't. Comments submitted by Laney Hennessy. My name is Laney Hennessy. I'm an 8th grade student athlete at Danforth. I'm writing to ask for the board to vote for optional masks. I've had to wear a mask since the beginning of school with no option, except when playing sports that are more contact and close than sitting in a classroom spread apart. A lot of teachers have been lenient with us not wearing a mask over our nose and mouth, but some of my teachers are more strict about it. I realize both sides are passionate about the issue, but only one side has been hurt so far. The only place I have to wear a mask is at school. Outside of school, my friends and I do not wear masks. I believe those that want to wear it should wear it. I also believe that my friends and I should have a right not to wear it at school. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Laney Hennessy. Comments submitted by Laura Hennessy. Good evening. My name is Laura Hennessy. I'm a mother of three students on three different campuses in WISD. Two of my kiddos have been participating in full-time sports since strength and speed camp this past summer and prior to the shutdown last March. My youngest is at Blue Hole, where she has not worn a mask at school all year. Although my older children are required to wear masks at school, they do not wear masks anywhere else, except when absolutely necessary. Neither do my husband and I nor the majority of their friends' and friends' parents. I believe God gave us an immune system that works when given the chance. I understand and recognize others believe the masks and social distance help keep us well. We can agree to disagree. Washing hands goes a long way in the virus-fighting department. In my opinion, a virus with a 99% plus recovery rate should never have warranted a mask mandate, much less a masks mandate that has lasted a year-plus. Just like we pushed back fear, prayed for our district, teachers, and kiddos, and started going back to school in August in hopes to maintain face-to-face education, let's push back the fear again and allow masks at school to be a choice. Both sides of the issue should be respected and allow the right to make their own decisions regarding the use of masks. Vaccines have been offered and administered to interested teachers and staff district-wide. Therefore, at this point, there should be no reason we cannot move forward and allow for optional mask use. I appreciate the board calling this issue to discussion and respectfully ask the board to vote in favor of optional masks for students for the remainder of this school year and moving forward. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Laura Hennessy. Comments submitted by Shannon Caldwell. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I am writing to ask that Wimberly ISD keep the mask rules in place for the remainder of the year and continue to enforce it. Considering board meetings are still being held virtually, I don't see how we can consider changing the day-to-day operations of schools. We have low numbers of cases right now, but that is because of the measures in place. Governor Abbott removed the mask mandate not because it was recommended by his medical team. They have specifically said he never even discussed it with them. He ended it without any scientific basis. I know many people are probably asking you to remove the masks because they don't want to live in fear, et cetera. I don't see listening to doctors as living in fear. We don't stop wearing our seat belts because the number of traffic fatalities is down. We continue to use them as long as the risk is still present. I truly hope that by August 2021, we can open school without masks, but since the vaccine isn't even approved for most students, let's not stop taking precautions too early. I want to end this school year without having teachers or students unnecessarily exposed to risks. Thank you, Shannon Caldwell. Comments submitted by Matt Cruzy. Dear board members, first and foremost, thank you for your service. We appreciate your time, your efforts, and sacrifices. My name is Matt Cruzy, and I'm a father to four Wimberly ISD students ranging from 9th grade down to 2nd grade. They first attended WISD as transfer students for three years until we eventually decided to make Wimberly our home in 2018 for several reasons. Primarily, the schools, as evidenced from being transfer students, and secondly, the community. As transfer students, we regularly discussed the option of relocating our home to Wimberly. I was hesitant for many years. I recall attending a performance at Jacob's Well, perhaps for grandparents' day or something similar. I do not recall the specifics of the program, but I do recall the feelings I experienced. I felt the love and pride for Wimberly, which caused me to desire to be a part of this community. I am happy to be part of this community now and hope that the community benefits as much from our citizenship as we benefit from WISD and the community. To accurately represent the constituents, it is important for school board members to learn and understand students, parents, and teachers' true feelings and opinions about each topic. I'm saddened to hear of students, parents, and teachers afraid to voice their opinion on the topic of mask choice for one reason or another. This is alarming. What have you all done to survey the students, teachers, and parents? A simple anonymous poll from all students, teachers, and parents would be enlightening for both sides of the debate. For me personally, I despise face masks because I rely heavily on reading lips to accurately and effectively listen and understand when I'm being spoken to. I doubt I'm alone on this. I'm concerned for students who are like me but are too shy or scared to voice their opinion or just do not want to break the rules, even though the rules are disadvantageous for their learning. This issue goes unresolved for both in-school instruction with masks on and online synchronous learning. So my desire goes beyond providing everyone a choice to wear a mask or not. My desire is to remove the masks entirely so students like me can once again learn without impairment. Nonetheless, the choice to wear a mask or not is a step in the right direction, and as a concerned parent, I support this action and hope you will represent me accordingly in the vote. Comments submitted by Max Chesser. I do not like wearing a mask because it's hard to understand my teacher. It is difficult to breathe when I have to wear it all day. I am a clean person. I am healthy. I wash my hands, and I wash them properly. Kids younger than me spread more germs than I do, and they don't have to wear their mask. My parents would not allow me to be at school if I were sick. They never have. I am a healthy person, and I do not need to wear a mask, and I feel like that is my right and privilege as an American. Comments submitted by Adeline Pollak. Dear Mr. York, I'm a 4th grader at Jacob's Well. I wrote you a letter earlier and mailed it to you. I just wanted to make sure you got it. I think we should have a choice of if we want to wear a mask or not. Here are three reasons why. One, I can't hear my teacher very well when she is talking or giving a spelling test. Two, I feel like I can't breathe when I'm wearing my mask. And three, I can't see people's smiles. I want the choice to take my mask off and not be asked about it. Thank you for reading my comments. Comments submitted by Kyler Pollak. To the Wimberly ISD board members, I go to Danforth Junior High. I would like a choice to not wear my mask for the rest of this school year. I can't see other people's facial expressions. I can't hear my classmates or my teachers very well because of the masks over their mouths. It distracts me a lot. My mask gives me headaches from wearing it every single day since August. I have had to miss school sometimes just so I can sit at home and do virtual and not have a headache anymore. Thank you, and I hope you lift the mask mandate for this school and this district. It is time to give us a choice so that we can focus on our learning without being distracted from our masks. Thank you for reading my comments. Comments submitted by Rowan Pollak. To the Wimberly ISD board members and Mr. York, I am writing to ask for a choice of whether or not we need to wear a mask. The governor of Texas has lifted the mandate and has given people a choice. I have friends that will still wear their mask, and that is okay. I would like the choice to not wear mine and for it to still be okay. There are obvious reasons that it is hard to sit in school every single day with my mouth covered. We have all done it for so long since the beginning of school, and now it is time for a choice. Please vote to give us a choice for the last few months of school. Thank you for your time. Comments submitted by Noah Hossaker. My name is Noah Hossaker, and I am 16 years old as a sophomore at Wimberly High. I am writing to the school board to voice my opinion about masks and the choice to wear them. I feel as if not wearing or wearing a mask is a choice. Since the mandate on Texas schools and businesses has been lifted and there is a vaccine for the virus that the mask is intended to prevent, the mask is uncomfortable, hard to breathe in, and in my opinion, useless. I feel as if I should have the choice not to wear and others should as well. I also respect the people that choose to keep wearing their mask. I feel if we are able to not wear them during sports and in other instances throughout the day, then they are not needed at all. Thank you for your time. Comments submitted by Meredith Ketter. Comments submitted by Meredith Ketter. It should be our job as parents to decide what is best for our children, not yours. Give the parents back the right to choose whether their children wear masks or not. You told us two weeks to flatten the curve. It has been more than a year. This is wrong, and you all know it. Most children at Blue Hole don't wear masks, and there have been no issues. My child has had chronic headaches, and the only thing the pediatrician can think that is causing this is masks. We are asking the board to stand up for what is right. We voted you into office so you would protect our children. Give each family the choice on what's best for their children. God gave us our kids because he trusted we knew what's best. We are asking that you let every family make their own choice. Comments submitted by Emily Frazier. I am Emily Frazier, a WHS 2015 graduate. I'm reaching out as a concerned citizen about students' right to choose in regards to wearing masks in school. As a former student, I understand the need for rules in school. The rules in place, however, do not infringe on a person's rights. Forcing students to wear masks does infringe on these rights and their freedom of choice. I believe if a student decides based on their beliefs and morals that they will not wear a mask, this should be respected just as someone who wants to wear a mask will be respected. I live in Colorado, and the thing I, as well as many others, see as a staple and privilege of Texas is the freedom of choice citizens are given, and citizens include students. These students are expected to make their own choices in other regards such as jobs, classes, sports, which college to go to, so I don't see how we can't let students and their families make their own choice about a simple mask. If a student wants to quote-unquote "take a risk" by not wearing a mask, then let them do so. There's a 95% to 97% chance you will recover from COVID. However, there is a 20% chance of all fatal teen car crash from drunk driving, three times their chance of getting from and recovering from COVID. But we hold no meetings in regard to steps to prevent these numbers. I personally knew former WHS students who died from drunk driving. In high school, I attended one mandatory presentation on the dangers of drunk driving, and I can tell you it didn't change anyone from drinking and driving afterwards. Students drink on campus and drive out of the parking lot drunk, and nothing is done to protect the health of them and others. We cannot decide to care about students' health with certain issues because of their larger political presence. We should focus on the bigger, deadlier issues at hand than a mask being worn for a virus that has extremely low death rate. Freedom of choice is deserved by everyone, including students, and this includes the choice to wear or not wear a mask. Comments submitted by Sarah Hossaker. My name is Sarah Hossaker. I'm a parent of five children, two that are in the WISD. I'm writing to the school board for our voices to be heard on behalf of me and my husband. We believe that wearing a mask is useless and should not be mandatory. We are asking simply for freedom of choice in this matter. There are plenty of surrounding school districts that have adopted the same policy after the governor lifted the mandate. In order for us as Texans to continue moving forward, we must stand up for our rights and freedoms. I could go on and on and on of the many instances of how this whole mask mandate has been used for political power and money. We have to move forward with life and take into very close consideration the well-being of our children and their mental health and what a mask is doing to so many of them. This virus is no different than other than another, and its survival rate is 99.9%. It is high time we quit treating it like a pandemic and realize that the government and the media are fear mongering and want nothing more than for us to be a bunch of sheep. Let's show them who the Wimberly Texans are. We stand for freedom and for America. Vote for freedom of choice. Comments submitted by Danny German. Pister ISD in North Texas never had a mask mandate. Quoting from a KTBT news article, PISD surveyed families to see what they wanted for their kids. According to KTBT, 55% of parents said they would send their students to school if masks and social distancing were required for all grades. When the district asked about offering a school year as close to normal as possible, that number jumped to 86%, continuing the article. And it appears to have paid off. In the district of more than 1,400 students, only eight students are still learning online. Daily attendance now is higher than it was a year ago. There were only about a dozen more teacher absences in the fall over a year ago, but no cases of COVID-19 in the first 10 weeks of the school year among students or staff. Only a few COVID cases were recorded by the end of 2020, and no cases have been recorded this year, KTBT said. District data shows that most students in PISD will finish the year at grade level as the district has closed learning gaps that were created when schools shut down in the spring. Can WISD boast the same stats? Are grade gaps remaining flat or closing? Are cases of mental and physical illness remaining flat or dropping? Or does WISD even know about their students' mental and physical wellness? Have they surveyed students and parents? Which would be the only legitimate way to ascertain this information? And what about slowing the spread? Are students properly wearing masks at school? Are they wearing masks away from school when they are with their friends? And if they aren't wearing them properly at school, and if they aren't wearing them around their friends outside of school, then has there been a large uptick in COVID cases at school? If the stats don't bear out in favor of the students and their welfare, and if they are not wearing masks properly at school or outside of school, then what exactly is the purpose of a continued mandate? I sure hope it's not fear or politics, because that would be tragically shameful. Please lift the mandate for the sake of our youth. Comments submitted by Michelle German. Federal studies have shown that since the pandemic, 40% of Americans are struggling with depression and substance abuse. That's a staggering number, and yet it is dwarfed by the 75% of young adults who are suffering from the same struggles. That's to say nothing of the dramatic increase in suicide. Please consider the kids. I understand that a mask worn properly decreases disease spread, which is why they are worn in operating rooms in hospitals. The key word is "properly." At any campus on any given day, just a handful of students actually wear masks properly. This begs the question, if they aren't worn properly, is it even helping at all? There are students and adults that are genuinely fearful of the virus. Their desires have been accommodated since day one through several means. Furthermore, teachers have been or have the option to be vaccinated. Those that see mask-wearing as a deterrent for their children's health have only been accommodated by providing the option to engage in virtual learning, which to date has proven to be too difficult for too many students, including my own. You well know the grade stats for this year and know how poor they are compared to the years past. It is time to accommodate parents and students who feel that masks are a deterrent by making mask-wearing an option. It's not even just masks. I mean, what's next? Are you going to start grocery shopping for my kids? Start mandating what is in their lunchboxes because childhood obesity is out of control as well? This is overstepping. The governor has lifted the mandate, and the TEA has given authority to school districts to determine mask-wearing policy, and many school districts have given the option back to the students and parents where the authority to choose should be. It is time for the mandate at WISD to be lifted and choice given back to the students. I've heard the argument to just let my kids zoom in, and it isn't the same. My kids, who have never struggled with depression, started to struggle, so I sent them back to school, and now they come home with headaches and terrible acne and complaints that they just hate school this year when they have always loved school in the past. Rumor has it that the board thinks the majority of families want the masks, but you aren't listening. The only way to know that is to survey each family, and there has been no survey. I know of several families that absolutely hate the masks and only have their kids wear them to school and nowhere else, but weren't willing to participate in the students' peaceful protest because of the pressure they received from teachers and coaches. This is bullying at its finest. Our numbers were small in the libraries these last few school days, but the support behind the scenes is big, and families are rooting for these kids and hoping for change tonight. Our kids need face-to-face interaction. They need to learn from a teacher they can actually hear. They need to be social and eat lunch with their friends in a setting that doesn't feel like a military chow hall. This is our next generation, and we are crushing their spirits and pitting them against each other out of fear. Comments submitted by Riley German. As a sophomore in high school, I think it is important that when you see something wrong, you take a stand for what you believe in. And I believe masks are wrong. I feel that they are useless, but I will not and have not criticized someone that felt differently. I just want to make my own choice about masking-wearing and get educated properly by attending school in person, rather. I tried virtual learning, and what I learned is that I do not learn well like that. Masks give me constant headaches and acne, which makes it hard to focus. Also, trying to hear a teacher with a mask on their face is difficult. Their voices are often too muffled to hear. Even the way students treat each other has changed for the worst. All we do is constantly argue about who is right and who is wrong, and how one person is disrespectful for not wearing it over their nose. Kids are putting each other down about mask preference, which is sad. As peers, we should want to support each other in everyone's personal beliefs, and yet that is not happening. Anger is growing. Also, I've not seen anyone I know outside of school wear a mask, no matter what they claim to believe about masks. If the mask mandate is removed, I know that there will be several students that will not wear their mask anymore. There will be the kids that continue to wear it as well, which I totally respect. I hope that the mandate is lifted so I can return to school and learn properly with my other classmates. If it is not, I will have no choice but to stay home and consider other learning options. Comments submitted by Lacey Thames. The governor has given Texas residents the right to choose whether they want to wear a face mask, and WISD should do the same. We, as parents, have the right to make our own decisions about our children. Safety measures are in place. All classrooms now have an air filtration system that sanitizes the air. There's Plexiglas in many elementary classrooms and cafeterias, and students that choose to will still be able to wear their masks. Please do not deny parents and their kids their right to choose for themselves. Do the right thing. Choose to return our freedom to us and vote for optional masks. Comments submitted by Campbell Horn. Half of the teachers at the HS are not even caring who isn't wearing a mask in class. The board thinks everyone is 100% masked over nose all day, and that is not true. I don't understand that if most teachers don't care and most teachers are vaccinated, why are students not allowed to choose? Most of the HS kids get together maskless after school, and we still have kept our case number very low. Please let us enjoy our last two months of senior year and allow us to choose like many other districts all around us. Comments submitted by Kristi Richardson. I want to express my opinion on the great mask debate for WISD schools. It is fairly clear to me by scientific data I've read, and actual Hayes County, specifically Wimberly area, data, that it just doesn't justify forced mask-wearing. Our family firmly believes that if we want to wear a mask, we should be allowed the same as if we choose not to wear a mask we should not be forced to. There should be no discrimination and no punishment either way. Please consider letting the parents and kids have that freedom back. If cases rise in the school, it can be revisited, but haven't our kids had enough being forced to wear one or stay home for a year? As I said earlier, the actual data just doesn't support it, and so I ask for the board to consider the removal of mandatory masks. Let us choose. Comments submitted by Jason C. The hysteria around masks/ no masks is not based in an ounce of factual evidence. As one example, see the study from the Royal Society of Medicine, "Unmasking the Surgeons: The Evidence Based Behind the Use of Face Masks in Surgery." This is fear mongering on a massive scale and has no place in our public schools. Even by the official records from the CDC, our kids are not at risk in the least. Even adults are super-low risk unless they have a comorbidity issue, i.e. super-poor health to begin with. As a Texan, I am ashamed that this is even up for debate. We are putting fear over feardom. Feardom, freedom, gosh dang it! As a Texan, I am ashamed that this is even up for debate. We are putting fear over freedom. Wimberly used to stand for something where people could make a personal statement and get away from the crazy of the big cities. What I see now makes me wonder when we adopted the approach that anyone's personal fears would dictate the behavior of the many. This is insulting and bullying to our kids. We are teaching them to be fearful and not even basing that on science. I expect more from my hometown, and I am super disappointed. I suggest that as a compromise that masks are made optional. Anyone should be able to wear one if they choose so. If a teacher, staff, parent is that concerned, they have the options of, one, getting a vaccine; two, double masking; three, getting an N95 mask. District can pay, or I'm happy to buy these at my expense. Continuing the silly mandate that all kids must wear masks is teaching them to be fearful, introducing other respiratory issues, and allowing bullying. Examples of teachers, students, coaches, all bullying students who do not want to wear a mask. Can we do better? Policies dictated by fear are what's killing America today. What happened to the land of the free and the home of the brave? What I am seeing here in my hometown of Wimberly is the land of the oppressed and the home of the scared. Is that what we stand for? I think not. Time to join many other districts and teach our kids the enduring price of freedom and the security of a community that loves them. Comments submitted by Bonnie Ball. My son and I are asking WISD to consider altering the mask mandate to optional. I can only speak for my son and have noticed a depression-like feeling from him this school year in accordance to this mask mandate. He was born with weak lungs, which leads to RSV at two weeks old and occasional asthma and pneumonia. So breathing in his own CO2 all day is bad for his health. He cannot hear the teacher's instruction and therefore does not ask any questions, leading to frustration and no hope on learning the material at all. He relies solely on his friends and mother to help him with his assignments, and most of his friends have different classes. Sometimes he gives up without instruction from his sources who aren't sure about the assignment themselves. Aside from this, there is a heavy thickness of tension in the air from this heated topic that is affecting our kids attending school. You have the power to make it optional. Please give our children their freedom back. He is going to school to learn from his teachers. I'm sure the teachers are frustrated as well, but giving everyone an option to wear a mask will help tremendously. If the particular teacher just does wear a mask, chances are there are students not wearing one who could speak clearly with instruction. Comments submitted by Millie Henry. We have heard from many experts, "The masks do not work. This is against our human and constitutional rights. It has been proven that wearing masks will result in a high number of throat cancer. This so-called pandemic is political-generated." Please protect our children. Do not fall into this political lie. They told everyone, "Once you are vaccinated, no more mask. You are safe." Now they are saying right the opposite. This is an effort to control and remove our civil liberties. Please stand up for our rights and our children's rights. They are trying to destroy us. Truly do your research. It is there. Don't surrender our rights. Don't buckle to pressure from those who are trying to destroy our children's education. I pray that you will go into this decision with open mind and eyes. The true science and facts are right there in front of you. Please have the courage to stand and fight for our children. Thank you. Comments submitted by Owen Hossaker. My name is Owen Hossaker. I'm 12 years old in sixth grade, and I go to Danforth Junior High. I'm here to write about not wearing my mask because I don't think it does anything. For example, one day I put a mask on and put my hand in front of my face and breathed, and I could feel my breath and was like, wow, so really, there is no difference. Anyways, could have just been a cheap mask, but still, at lunch, kids are all together, and all of a sudden, we are fine. I just don't get how a mask makes a difference, because sometimes wearing a mask makes it difficult to breathe, but I get yelled at when it's not over my nose. So I decided that it is not right. Please give us the freedom of choice. If other kids want to wear the mask, that is fine. I choose not to, and that is my right. Thank you for your time. Comments submitted by Chelsea Geeson. Please allow students and teachers the freedom to have mask choice. Masks affect the physical, mental, and social health, and should be a choice. They should have the right to that freedom to decide whether or not to wear a mask. Comments submitted by Megan Williamson. I filled out Mr. York's questionnaire about revisiting the safety protocols in our district, but I feel like you all are hearing from the loud minority of parents that want to make masks optional. I urge you to actually calculate how many people in our district that they represent and realize that the 30-ish students on our campus that are refusing to wear masks are not representative of our more than 600 students that attend Danforth. We have done so well this crazy school year keeping COVID cases down. The task force created protocols that have largely prevented the spread of the virus in our buildings. I feel that lifting the mask protocol in our district would be premature and further disrupt the end of our school year. I'm concerned about the students that were hesitant at first to come back on campus. We have worked so hard to get them back on campus to give them the best access to quality education that we can provide. So many were at home and either not doing their work, didn't have access to high-speed internet, or were just scared to be on campus. We have had conversations with those families and reassured them that our safety protocols will keep them safe while here in person. We did the right thing getting our sped students and 504 students the best access to their accommodations to help them be successful. We got students back on campus that were distracted by siblings or other outside influences so that they can focus on their schoolwork. I feel that we will lose many students back to synchronous learning if we allow masks to be optional. We know that in-person learning is the best quality that we can offer and don't want to restrict access to that for students that can't be around unmasked people. Let's continue to provide excellence to our students and not be bullied by some loud parents that aren't taking everyone's health into consideration. Let's ride out the rest of the school year with masks and reassess this summer. Comments submitted by Stephen Moore. I strongly support the continuation of social distancing and the requirement to wear a mask while on Wimberly ISD campuses. Frankly, it is unbelievable that the issue is even up for debate, especially after all that has happened over the past year, with over 47,000 already dead in Texas from the SARS-CoV-2 virus. One would think that our community would be able to bear the inconvenience of wearing a mask for a few more months in order to keep from killing other people. This is not Wimberly's finest hour. We should be better than this. After 12 months of dealing with a disease and its sequelae, I've yet to hear a cogent moral argument that supports not wearing a mask. A preponderance of evidence exists that suggests masks are effective. For those who tend to believe anecdote over evidence, the seasonal viruses that have commonly affected children like influenza and RSV disappeared this past winter despite having a lower threshold for testing. In 20 years of practice, I have never seen anything like it, and it speaks to the effectiveness of masks and social distancing. I have three children in Wimberly ISD schools witnessing the horrors of the past year as an emergency room doctor, the death, the struggle to breathe, the family goodbyes when the inevitable declares itself, makes it impossible for me to comprehend why anyone would willingly want to put my children, my other family members, their children's teachers, or any other human being, for that matter, at risk of contracting COVID. It also leaves me searching for why WISD would even consider removing the mask requirement, knowing that it would force parents to choose between the safety of their children and their children going to school in person, the recommended form of learning by the American Academy of Pediatrics. Wimberly's medical community, the CDC, and the American Academy of Pediatrics all continue to recommend the use of masks for in-person learning. By following these individuals and agencies' recommendations, Wimberly ISD will be doing what it can to ensure the safety and well-being of all of its students. Thank you. Sincerely, Stephen Moore, M.D. Comment submitted by WISD Teacher. As a teacher in Wimberly ISD, I appreciate that the district has taken precautions to ensure the safety of students and its employees. The regard for the mask mandate last year was implemented as belief that it was the best decision at the time for the district per Governor Abbott's recommendations. Now that Governor Abbott has modified the mandate, I ask that the district honor its change in full, just as it honored the mandate enforced last year. I think the new order is simple. It is the choice of the people whether or not to wear a face covering. As written in the most recent executive order on page 2, number 2B, there is no state-imposed requirement to wear a face covering. And following on page 2, number 2CII, no jurisdiction may impose a penalty of any kind for failure to wear a face covering or failure to mandate that customers or employees wear face coverings. Please deeply consider allowing the personal choice of mask-wearing for employees and students. Comment submitted by Courtney Mazur. It's time to end the mask mandate. The data doesn't support keeping it in place, and the leaders have responded. Wimberly should be at the forefront of this, just like we did when we were one of the first schools to start back. Our kids need to go back to being the priority. Comment submitted by J.C. Downing. My mask makes me have a headache. I'm always worried about it, and it makes me think someone is going to yell at me if I don't wear it right. They frustrate me and they tickle my nose. My friends can't hear me talk to them when I have to wear it, so I always get frustrated and say, never mind. Please stop making me wear a mask. I do not have Corona, and I don't have to wear a mask anywhere else but school. And now I don't even like school anymore, but my mom and dad make me go. That's it. Comment submitted by Lori Tommy. When we opened our schools at the beginning of this school year, we made a promise to students and the staff that the proper or safety measures would be put in place to keep everyone safe. For the most part, Wimberly ISD has done an amazing job at this. Students have been able to experience a near-normal year, and we are down to only a handful of students still being virtual. The number of people that have had the opportunity to become vaccinated in our community is increasing daily, and hopefully by May, everyone that wants to be vaccinated will be vaccinated. If we allow students to not wear masks now, then we run the risk of taking huge steps back. There is a possibility that there will be a large number of parents that will have their students go back to being virtual because they do not feel like the schools will be safe. Even though students will have the option of wearing their mask if they want to, it is impossible to social distance in the classroom. We have been able to keep our numbers of COVID cases relatively low so far, but we are running the risk of the numbers increasing and then people in the community viewing the school as being liable if it coincided with students not wearing masks. Many teachers will receive their first vaccine by the end of spring break, but they will still need to receive the second vaccine and go through the two-week time period where their body is building up the proper immunity before they will be safe. There are several households that have family members that are at high risk, they're still waiting to be allowed to receive the vaccine, and may not be able to get it until closer to May. I know that people are sick of wearing masks, we all are, but the year is almost over and there is light at the end of the tunnel. We need to finish out this school year strong with the encouragement that we will be able to start next school year mask-free. Comment submitted by Chelsea Young. Mandatory masking of children is not only harmful but completely unnecessary. The science is very clear on this, but the media confused it. Please allow for mask choice. No one should be forced to wear a mask nor forced not to. Thank you. Comment submitted by Brittany. Schools mandated masks to comply with Governor Abbott's executive order. That executive order has been lifted, so mask choice should be instated immediately. Parents are the highest authority over their own children, and they have every right to make decisions on what is best for them. The mandate that put our kids in these masks to begin with is now lifted. We kindly ask that the school board simply acknowledge that and comply with the very same thing they complied with in the beginning, although I fully appreciate this is not an easy decision. It really is quite that simple. Comment submitted by Marcy Downing. It saddens me to live in such a small town and have to virtually submit comments. That we can't meet in person shows how we have bought into mainstream thinking of false and constantly changing ideals about this pandemic. 15 days to slow the spread, six feet, no three feet, now back to six, over a year later, when will the crazy stop? As of last week, we had three cases of COVID in our district. This has been trying and difficult for all, but the most I feel for are our children. I hate to see the effect this has had one to two years down the road. We all know this is not a childhood virus. The statistics show it is no worse than the common flu. Our children deserve freedom and personal liberty to choose whether they want to wear a mask or not. If masks really work, why are people that have masked up still get it? This matters about the mask, but if you all don't stand up now to personal freedom, what will you do when they use to require the vaccine for all the kids to come to school? Or they try and push their crazy sex-ed agenda with the gender-bred man? You will lose your district. The opposing side is loud, but there is a silent majority that has been ignited, and we are not going to let our kids suffer for the current movement that is going on in our country. I propose your current task force suggestions to be modified to a mask choice. Also, have you considered for the teachers that are so concerned the following options? Classroom modifications for them, not the student? Put them behind a plexiglass shield at their desk. Buy them true N95 masks and face shields. If they truly work, then they should be fine, right? Why are you imposing your rules on the many for the few? Instead, why don't you focus on the few? This decision lies in your hands tonight. Again, this is not just about the mask. This is the beginning of many issues that are coming down the pipe. If you don't stand up now, there are many families that are ready to withdraw their children, homeschool, or transfer to other districts. We elected you to choose what's best for our kids, not for personal political aspirations or a career in the school board or to further your personal business, and that is the current consensus of several board members per the parents. Please do what's right for our kids. I'm not saying this for my own daughter, but for my grandchildren that will attend these schools. Please vote on the side of what's right. Vote your faith. Vote for your children's liberty and freedom now so it's not an uphill battle on the next issue. It is time to do the right thing. Comment submitted by Reagan Mazur. I'm asking that masks be a choice. I feel like it is wrong to force us to wear something that cover our face and nose. I'm at a school instead of online because I want to be around and socialize with my friends. If his teacher is afraid, then maybe the kids that don't want to wear the mask can sit at the back of the room, and the teacher can sit at her desk behind the plastic and wear a mask. Comment submitted by Teresa Haslam. At this point, you guys are abusing your power by mandating masks. The emergency mandate has been lifted, and parents, students, staff should be able to choose if they'd like to wear a mask. We are responsible for our own health. Comment submitted by Stephanie Carter. So far this year, WISD has done a great job ensuring student safety while delivering the high-quality instruction we are known for with the board-approved COVID protocols. I know many teachers in other districts across the state and country that cannot say the same, so thank you for allowing us to feel safe while getting the opportunity to instruct our students in person. I don't believe that we should change the policy due to a very small number of the overall student population, 30 to 40 out of 600, on our campus demanding such change. It would send the wrong message and create a dangerous precedent that the majority of people will be pushed aside for the few that are loudest. Being loud and causing a distraction doesn't make an opinion valid. Public safety has always taken precedent, and Texas public health officials, as well as federal health officials, have said masks are still needed. It is still the right thing to have masks because when the board approved the face mask mandate, it did so to ensure all students were safe. All staff and students have family outside of each campus that are also kept safe by the protocol agreed on at the beginning of the year. We have a few months of school left, so I believe the safety protocols can be revisited over the summer once more people have been given, have been able to get the vaccine and cases continue to trend downward. Thank you for your time and consideration. Comment submitted by Mary Latham. Surgical and cloth masks were not designed to prevent viral transmissions. Please consider all the science and not just picking and choosing the data that supports one side or the other of this political mandate. Please allow freedom of choice for the mask-wearing mandate in our schools at WISD. Please read Dr. Jim Meehan's article, "Surgeon Destroys Myth." If masks don't work, why do surgeons wear them? To help your committee make your decision. Comment submitted by Sarah Ruiz. Good evening and thank you for your time. As the parent of a young child at JWE, I'm asking that you please give us the choice to send our children to school with or without masks. Our country was founded on freedom, and we cannot let those rights be taken away. I'm not asking for masks to go away. I understand some people feel more comfortable wearing them, and that is respected. Those who do not want to wear masks deserve that right to choose as well and be respected. The masks are not healthy for our children and has caused many days of headaches and increased anxiety in our child. We cannot stand back and be silent anymore. Please give us the right to choose. I'm praying you all do the right thing for our amazing children. Comment submitted by Charles M. Craig. According to the Texas Tribune, the coronavirus has claimed more than 46,000 lives in Texas within the past year. Friends, family, and neighbors have all been affected. I'm acutely aware of the risks, having received cancer treatments over the past year. The mask mandate must be continued in its present form. I urge the board to put facts and science and its responsibility to the health and well-being of all students ahead of a squawking minority of persons with a personal agenda. While we all understand the virtues of personal liberty, we must also be concerned when the exercise of that liberty ignores the legal and moral limitations against recklessly endangering the health and safety of others. The pursuit of liberty is a valued tenet, but the reckless endangerment of others is an abhorrent assault with real consequences, as we have seen throughout Texas in the past year. Please continue the mask mandate already in place. Those who object can be offered school digitally. My life may well depend upon it.
Okay, we do have 46 more comments. I'm going to read them out loud and to the record. I should say too that, gosh dang it, was not part of the comment. I want to say it out loud so that that is reflected. Okay, comment made by Courtney Katzmeier. I believe masks should continue to be required during school. Students and teachers have been successfully wearing masks to school for seven months now and has been going smoothly. Until a greater percentage of the population is vaccinated against COVID-19, masks remain our best line of defense. Those truly uncomfortable wearing masks, WISD is still offering online learning. I believe safety is more important than comfort and that school needs to be a safe place for students. That includes following CDC guidelines to keep our classrooms safe during a global pandemic. I also think it's important to remember that numerous schools all over the nation are still mostly or fully virtual. We are very privileged to be mostly in person, and masks have helped us achieve that success during this very unexpected year. I believe masks are a small necessary sacrifice to ask for the greater safety of our WISD students. Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Jen Cross. I'm the parent of two Danforth students. Both have straight A's and have never been in trouble. They're in a different band. One was featured in the video to recruit fifth graders to join sixth-grade band next year. The other made first chair in percussion in regional band. They also played football and is on the track team. Our daughter tried out for cheerleading. They are good kids contributing to this school district, and they love school, until now. We tell them that when faced with a tough decision, one must always choose on the side of freedom. We are demanding the freedom to choose to wear masks or not. We are not denying anyone the choice to wear one. Those concerned can social distance, which has now been lowered to three feet. They can wear one or two masks and face shields, or they can get the vaccine. Those who opted for this district service should be fully vaccinated by now. In addition, this school is thoroughly sanitized, and there are remote learning options available. Every mechanism to make people feel safe that is available is here and in place. What else are you waiting for? If that is not enough for concerned teachers, we propose the district get them the mask of their choice and make classroom modifications to isolate them from students. Otherwise, we respectfully invite them to reconsider their career choice or encourage them to transfer to another district. The concerns of a few can no longer dictate the rules for the majority. It is time to bring back freedom to choose. They never should have been taken in the first place. Take a look at the low number of cases on the WISD homepage. Our school that never had masks at all has had zero cases. Many of the districts around us we interact with for sports and other events have already made masks optional. Kids and their families don't wear masks outside of class. Take a look at the pickup line. Most are outside without masks or with them on improperly. They go to church and play together on school teams and on their own outside of school with no masks. To think wearing masks at school is the reason for low case numbers is illogical. Children are not biohazards. Even if COVID was a legitimate danger, no crisis justifies handing over our civil liberties in response. We demand our freedom back. Human condition default is no mask. We have been more than patient for over a year. There's nothing more we can do to make people feel completely safe. We're at the point where if someone is very concerned, it is time they make changes, not the majority of the population. It is time to exercise the options available to them. We value freedom and personal choices. We do not expect anyone to change their life or behavior for the benefit of our health. As believers, it would go against our beliefs to ask others to change theirs for our benefit. Our health is our own responsibility. Your health is your own responsibility. Liberty over fear. Thank you. Next comment is Joanna Turbo. Good evening. I'm currently a classroom teacher at Danforth Junior High. I would like to ask that students and faculty still be required to wear masks on campus. I do not feel it is safe for students or faculty to risk exposing each other to coronavirus. Our lives, all our lives, are too precious not to take as many precautions as we can to keep each other safe. I think we should wear masks until the end of the school year and revisit the topic at the beginning of the next school year. Thanks. Next comment is Lexi Cruzey. To Wimberly School Board members, my name is Lexi Cruzey, and I'm currently a ninth grader at Wimberly High School. I'm displeased and irritated with the mask mandate at the school. I believe that all people attain the freedom of choice, but I do not feel that I'm given that privilege. Close to the beginning of the school year, I chose to learn in person when we were given the option to. I chose it because I was unable to learn synchronously and was not getting the grades I desired or ordinarily received. Since I chose to not wear my mask the past week, I'm given the only option of returning home to learn synchronously or spending my school day in the library learning synchronously. I do not think that it is just to give me one singular option of synchronous learning when I should be obtaining the education not only that my parents pay for, but the education I deserve. I think that students should be given the option of wearing a mask, but why am I not receiving an option to not wear one? Why are those who choose to not wear masks at home when those who want to wear one could stay home if they are worried for their safety? What is so extremely frustrating is the fact that other students, my peers, and even my teachers wear their masks incorrectly but are not dealing with any consequences whatsoever. Why is it tolerable to wear a mask below my chin but not acceptable to just not wear one? All I hope and pray for is that our freedom and desires are concerned in your upcoming meeting, considered in your upcoming meeting. I hope this situation was pondered on and that this meeting will not be one-sided. Personally, it is not about a mask. It is about my freedom and my agency, and I ask you to take it into consideration. Next comment is from Andrea Justice. Hi, I'm writing again to express how important it is to this community and the health and well-being of the children in WISD that have both be taken on the mask mandate and that WISD restores the freedom of choice to our children and their families before this school ends. The data regarding infections in our community as well as across our nation do not show that we are even in a pandemic. Please look at excess deaths year over year and the miraculous disappearance of the flu. I encourage you to look at the data around children even catching the virus, dying from it, and passing it along. I also ask you to look at the research around the psychological and health impacts to the constant masking of children. God did not design our bodies to breathe in our own breath hours on end. We have an immune system to protect us, and the reason should be encouraging healthy eating, vitamin D, why hand washing, and other much more effective and practical solutions. There is simply no reason our children should be masked regularly, and the school board does not have the right to remove the freedoms of these children to choose for themselves what is best for their health. The teachers want to mask, then let them. If some students want to mask, then let them. It should be a choice for everyone and not a mandate. There's no doubt of support that they even work and prevent the spread of the virus. Please do what is right by these children, have intellectual integrity based on the science and facts, and stand up for the Constitution and biblical values. Respectfully, Andrea Justice. Next one is Macy Jane Chesser. I'm a seventh-grade Danforth student, and I think that everyone should have the freedom to choose whether or not they would like to wear masks at school. Many students are very fearful of getting in trouble with their teachers as well as coaches if they do not wear a mask. I hope you vote to give students and teachers the freedom to choose if they would like to wear a mask at school. Next one is Richard Downing. My wife and I have been so appreciative for the awesome teachers our daughter has been blessed with this year as well as in the past. We don't want to make life hard on them or any WISD staff, but we have been submissive to the authority since the beginning of the pandemic back in 2020, all the way until Governor Abbott made the executive order to change the previous mask mandate on March 10th, 21. Unfortunately for schools, the decision was pushed to each district's school board to decide on any modifications, such as allowing students to choose for themselves. As surrounding school districts have voted for choice, I respectfully ask that the WISD school board vote the same for our kids. I've heard that there are a number of teachers and/or faculty that have threatened to walk out if the mask mandate does not stay in place. But we are not to live our lives out of fear, but one of conviction and confidence. Deuteronomy 31:8, "The Lord himself goes before us and will be with us. He will never leave us nor forsake us. Do not be afraid; do not be discouraged." If some choose to leave, WISD will still open the doors each and every day with the support of all in the community. President Reagan had a similar situation in the beginning of his presidency with 13,000 air traffic controllers that went on strike. After President Reagan warned them, they would be terminated. Of the 13,000 controllers stuck, only 1,300 returned to work, and aviation had challenges but still operated and worked through it. Good example as teaching still will go if any teachers do walk out. You, the school board, were elected by us, the people, to represent our children and not for aspirations of higher offices, better your position in business, et cetera. My wife and I practice what we preach and have allowed our daughter to make her choice on this matter. I prayerfully ask that each and every one of you board members will vote for choice and not mandate. Know that there are many people watching how each of you vote and will plan accordingly in November. Thank you for allowing me to share. Best, Richard Downing. Next is Aaron Baumann. As a parent and teacher, I have been thoroughly impressed by WISD's performance in keeping As a parent and teacher, I have been thoroughly impressed by W I S D's performance in keeping both faculty and students healthy and learning throughout the pandemic. I feel safe coming to work daily because of the protocols that the board established and that administration, faculty, staff, and students have maintained. My students have also become comfortable and feel safer because the rules in place. The district has done an outstanding job. However, the pandemic is not over. Not all members of our community have had access to vaccinations yet, and we are not quite out of the woods. Removing the mask mandate poses safety concerns needlessly. The government has said that all adults who want to be vaccinated will be able to receive doses by the end of May. That is so close. It would be a shame to ruin all the good work and procedures we've had in place. I'm afraid that without masks, large populations of our students will become sick or quarantined and miss valuable instruction. We do not want students to miss any more of that instructional time, especially at such a pivotal part of the year. Our district has also played a vital role in protecting members of the community whom students go home to. I'm afraid we will endanger their lives as well. Ultimately, we need healthy students in the classroom. We only have 10 weeks of school until the term ends. That would be a better time to return this item to the agenda and discuss changes for next school year. At that time, I will absolutely support the removal of the mask mandate if the science shows it's an appropriate time. Thanks for your time. Next is from Meredith Davenport. To the members of the W I S D board, first of all, thank you for your service to our community. My name is Meredith Davenport and I want to address any proposed changes to the return to school procedures in regards to the mask requirement for students and staff at W I S D. I'm a mother of three children, one of which is an eighth grader at Danforth attending in person, and one of which is a 10th grader at W H S attending virtually who is considering returning in person for the final six weeks. I'm also a physician who has been on the front lines working in multiple hospital settings for two decades, including the past year in the midst of a pandemic. As a family, we are fortunate that one of the high-risk individuals in our family is now vaccinated against COVID-19, as are my husband and myself. I'm also thrilled that W I S D employees who so desire to were able to obtain their first vaccine prior to break. Unfortunately, my children are not yet vaccinated as one of them, as one is not yet available to them. My husband and I, along with many of my colleagues, are increasingly concerned not only about the ongoing death toll related to COVID-19, but also about the unknown long-term impacts of this disease, including the long hauler syndrome that can last for weeks after infection. Estimates in the medical literature are that roughly 10% of adults infected with COVID-19 go on to have long-term significant symptoms. We are now starting to see case reports for children with long hauler syndrome. At this time, treatment is unknown and solely the basis of ongoing research. Additionally, we are now seeing new variants in the U.S. that are more easily transmissible and it is not entirely clear yet whether our vaccines are effective against these new variants. Therefore, prevention remains the key to protecting ourselves, our families, and our community from complications of COVID-19. As a preventative measure, the CDC currently recommends that even vaccinated persons continue to mask when gathering with large groups from different houses. This would be consistent with a school setting. We require that our children take science every year in school, presumably because we think science is important. Why would we consider not using scientific recommendations as adults to protect those very same children and their heroic teachers and staff in the midst of a pandemic? I believe that we have been very fortunate to have had uninterrupted in-person school this year, including extracurricular activities. The courage on the part of our teachers, staff, and administrators to navigate the myriad challenges and successfully offer both in-person and virtual school has been fundamental to this achievement. The success of the efforts by the W I S D nurses and contact tracers has resulted in keeping our numbers low with a mask requirement in place. I personally look forward to not having to wear a mask outside of the operating room at some point in the future. However, not, now is not the time to change W I S D guidelines. Please continue to require masks, masking as per the current return to school procedures to protect our children, our teachers, staff, and administrators at W I S D, as well as our Wimberly community at large. Thank you passionately, Meredith Davenport, M.D. Next is Anthony and Lindsay Garinger. W I S D Board of Trustees, we want to thank you for your continued support of all students and staff by requiring masks at W I S D for ages 10 and above. Masks are at most an annoyance, and at least they are a selfless act to those around us. Let us continue to show our students how to serve others by continuing this simple requirement. Masks have saved lives and are recommended by the medical, medical community. During this pandemic, let's look to the scientists who know most. You can find this information on the CDC's website. The most recent update was March 19th, 2021. Schools providing in-person instruction should prioritize two prevention strategies. One, universal incorrect use of masks should be required. Two, physical distancing should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. All prevention strategies should provide some level of protection and layered strategies implemented at the same time provide the greatest level of protection. Schools should adopt prevention strategies to the largest extent practical. A layered approach is essential. These guidelines are in place based on the best science that is currently available. Rescinding W I S D's current masking policies would increase the risk of contracting COVID-19 for W I S D students, school staff, and for our wider community. Please do not put parents in a situation where they need to send their students to a riskier environment in order to receive public education. Rescinding W I S D masking policies will create major problems for some families who have already experienced a difficult year due to the pandemic, including the financial and educational stress of homeschooling. Keeping the W I S D masking policies in place will require some students to wear masks when they would prefer not to wear them. The health of the many should not be impacted by the preference of a few. The combination of masks and social distancing is how our district has done so well this year. These safety measures are essential until all that are able are vaccinated. Please continue to require masks at the end of the 2020, 2021 school year and reassess for the 21, 22 school year. Thank you for your time and service to our kids and the community, Anthony and Lindsay Garinger. Next is Brittany Gilli. I'm asking that no changes be made and that masks will continue to be required for the following reasons. One, many teachers are not fully vaccinated, myself included, and have been waiting patiently. Two, if students are allowed to come with no masks, you are taking away an entire learning option for those who do not feel comfortable being around others not wearing a mask. This could push more students back to online learning who need to be in person. Three, we need to be mindful and care for those who have real fears and trepidation as well as health issues. We neglect those students and families in this decision. We are failing at part of our role as the school district to teach compassion, thinking of others, and how to be an outstanding member of society. Four, many families traveled over spring break and there could be a spike after the holiday like we have had after every holiday. Five, we have made it this far, let's finish strong. Next is Sheila Ray. I'm appealing to the school board to modify the existing unconstitutional regulation of mask requirements and guarantee our American freedom to mask or unmask in a school setting. If the board would spend just one hour on OSHA's website reading about the extreme differences in protection between a simple cloth mask and a NIOSH-approved respirator, you would understand the utter ridiculousness of requiring a cloth mask as a protection against any virus, including COVID. The protections some claimant to provide are literally a joke. However, the anxiety, depression, and fear that is being shoved upon our children is no joke. Neither are the skin issues, cracking, peeling, face rashes, rashes, and acne that some are battling. Consider the information on OSHA's own site. I substitute the word district for employer to drive my point home. The district may allow the voluntary use of surgical masks. Even where an exposure assessment shows respirator use is not required and the district may provide surgical masks for voluntary use. However, surgical masks may not be used in lieu of required respiratory protection. Surgical masks are not considered respirators by OSHA. They are fluid-resistant, disposable, and loosening protection that create a physical barrier between the mouth and those of the wearer. They are commonly used in healthcare settings for the protection of the patient and they are also often used to prevent splashes from contacting the face of the wearer. However, surgical masks do not seal tightly to the wearer's face, nor do they provide a reliable level of protection from inhaling smaller airborne particles like a virus. I could go on for pages on the OSHA limitations and requirements for airborne hazards versus chemical and fluid hazards. If there is no official NIOSH respirator being used, the masks are an emotional Band-Aid only. I'll stop at this main point. A surgical cloth mask is not a recognized protection against small airborne particles, so please do not require one for school attendance. Give freedom to each individual. Next is Bess Reisberg. I'm a science teacher at Danforth Junior High and would like to share my thoughts about the mask protocol on our campus. Throughout this school year, we have done a great job of enforcing the safety protocols that were decided on by the task force and agreed upon by teachers and parents. We have convinced our parent communities that it is safe for their kids to be on campus. Families that have been virtual this entire school year are finally coming back to campus. Our students are used to wearing the masks and following the safety protocols and because of our continual effort, we have been able to keep W I S D open this entire school year and help everyone feel safe at school. If we were to change the rules to accommodate the 30 or so students that are protesting the mask requirement at Danforth out of over 600 students on campus, we would be sending the message that the opinions of 30 students are more important than the right to safety for our 600 students and 75 faculty members. We have a commitment to all of our children to make school a safe place for learning. Families that do not want their kids to wear masks have an option already in place. Their kids can attend school synchronously. Until every person who wants a vaccine has gotten a vaccine, we must continue enforcing masks. Our students and staff are used to them, they have proven to be effective, and we only have two more months of school left. Sticking to the safety plan that everyone has agreed upon is the safest and easiest thing we can do for our community. Thank you so much for your time. Next is Katie Hubner. The return to school protocol adopted by the W I S D board stated that masks must, must be worn in school buildings. I've had very few issues with students not wearing masks since we returned to school in the fall. Yes, there have been occasional reminders, but students have politely complied. Since the mask requirement was lifted by the state on March 10th, W I S D has not amended the return to school protocol regarding masks. Therefore, masks should have been worn in W I S D buildings on March 10th, 11th, 12th, and the 22nd. On those days, students were allowed to be on our campuses without masks and this caused a major unnecessary disruption to our learning environment. Allow me to paint a picture of that disruption. One, unmasked students that didn't get picked up by parents were taken to a holding area to continue with their school day. Two, while in the holding area, some students did not attend the teachers' Zoom meetings. Three, some students that attended the teachers' Zoom meetings were not paying attention and as a result, teachers had to reteach while students in the classroom waited. Four, some students were emailing students in the classrooms persuading them to come to the holding area. Five, some students in the holding area didn't take tests that were assigned on those days. Six, some students left the holding area and entered classrooms to get paper copies of the assignment. Seven, some students were rude and disrespectful to teachers when asked to put on a mask in the hallways. Eight, some students that were in the classrooms wanted to go to the holding area to avoid certain classes. Nine, some students that were in the classrooms on Wednesday went to the holding area on Thursdays and then back to the classroom on Friday. These were all disruptions that I personally witnessed and I'm sure there were others who are not included on my list. The administration at Danforth, teachers, and monitors handled the situation in a respectful manner, but one cannot ignore that these students were violating the W I S D return to school protocol that the board approved on July 20th, 2020. Now moving forward, my professional role is to educate, foster healthy relationships, and create a safe learning environment. My expertise is in education, not medicine. It only makes sense to rely upon the knowledge and recommendations of our W I S D medical professional staff concerning masks. The board's decision should not be made based on politics, emotions, rights, or persuasion from aggressive groups, but instead what is safe for all students and employees. Next is Courtney Keel. Please do not change any of the health and safety protocols for the remainder of the school year. We've kept our students and staff well protected from COVID. It has been impressive. I'm extremely disappointed in the stories coming out of the kids being allowed to remain on campus and even have a pizza party in the library when they refuse to wear masks. That is in clear violation of the student code of conduct level one. We are nearing the finish line and let's finish strong and safe. Next is Mindy Weber. I ask you to continue the safety protocols that are currently in place to keep our community safe. Let's keep Wimberly strong. Next is Rebecca Strobel. On July 9th, 2020, an email was sent out from W I S D that stated the district would follow and comply with the executive order GA-29 issued on July 2nd, 2020 and is in effect and will be until modified or rescinded by the governor. On 3/2/2021, Texas Governor Greg Abbott announced that effective 3/10/2021, GA-29 will be rescinded. But it is up to each Texan to make decisions about their health and their business. Are we still going to comply with the governor's order? My family has respectfully followed the COVID guidelines with the district, T E A, and the state. We are very grateful to have the option of in-person school from the start of the school year. Schools where kids want to be and where they thrive with structure, responsibilities, and a sense of normalcy to their days. We have three children on three different W I S D campuses. Each campus looks and functions very differently on a day-to-day basis regarding COVID guidelines and masks due to the logistics of classes and ages of children. That being said, all three campuses, B H P, J W E, and D F J H have all seen very few cases despite the fact that one campus is primarily unmasked children at all points of the day. One campus has masked children at almost all points in the day. And one campus is somewhere in between with only masks during certain points in the day and unmasked the rest of the day. The masks on or off are not impacting the numbers in our district on our campuses. Most of the masks that children are wearing will not stop airborne viruses of any kind. These kids are not wearing N95 masks. The masks they are wearing are mostly made of fabrics like cotton or cotton blanes made of one or two layers which are not medical grade. The masks and neck gaiters are reused day after day, hopefully being washed daily, but there's no way to know. And even if they are, a regular wash cycle at home does not make them sterilized. These masks go up and down on the kids' faces, around their necks, around their wrists, in their hands, on the floor, in and out of pockets and backpacks, and are probably touched by hands and other contaminated surfaces 100 times a day. Nearly as soon as these masks and neck gaiters are put on, they are not clean. They are not healthy for our children to be wearing over their nose and mouth and they are not stopping the spread of the virus. I do not envy the position that you all are in. These are not easy decisions to be made. There is no one answer that will make everyone happy. I do believe that there should be consistency with following the state guidelines set forth by the governor. Currently allowing each student to make their own decision regarding masks would be consistent. Wear the mask or don't wear the mask. At this point, either choose should be, either choice should be equally respected. Respectfully, Rebecca Strobel. Next is Amy Hernandez, M.D. Good evening, I'm writing in regards to continuing the current mask protocol at W I S D. I'm a physician in our community caring for your students, staff, and their loved ones. And I myself have loved ones who work in and attend your schools. I've been so proud of our school district's success this year, especially in regards to health and safety decisions for students and staff. Although the medical community has seen a glimmer of hope with COVID cases plateauing and with over 20% of the Texas population now vaccinated, we continue to hold our breath for a new rise in cases in Texas. COVID is not gone. Your local medical community continues to see moderate to severe COVID cases on a daily basis. I urge continued masking because it is proven by science. Studies over the last year have shown that masking plays a huge role in decreasing transmission of respiratory diseases, period. The goal of masking is to keep others from being exposed to you, but it's also been shown to weaken the viral load that does pass through. It is one huge strategy that works, along with distancing and good hygiene. Please consider continuing mask protocols at this time until our local cases continue to trend down and not just plateau and until vaccinated teachers and some students are able to build immunity. I appreciate your time. Next is Lindsay O'Gan. My two children are students at Blue Hole Elementary. Their grandparents live with us and are high risk for severe illness from coronavirus. Due to this risk, I've been virtually schooling my children all year. My kids, my kids have not experienced a normal school day nor played with their classmates for an entire year. They have sacrificed so much to help keep their families safe. My emos are not fully vaccinated and we were able, we were planning to send my kids back to school in person to complete the last nine weeks of school. If mask mandates for teachers are lifted, we will be unable to send them back due to the risk of a teacher giving my children a variant of coronavirus that the vaccine isn't as effective against. Keeping our children and staff safe is our number one priority as a district. We need to continue the safety protocols that we have had all year and that have been relatively effective at minimizing illness. 16 children at Blue Hole have been confirmed positive this year that we know of, potentially harming family and having long-term health consequences we don't even know about yet. Let's not risk increasing that number simply to appease a small local minority that do not believe in following CDC and T E A recommendations. Thank you for your time. Next is Luke German. Masks are a thing that many people feel work and many people feel don't work. I feel that masks should be a choice for everybody and it's not just me that feels that way. People like to freedom, people like to the freedom to choose and this is taken away from our freedom to choose and it makes a lot of us not feel well. Also, it's hard to hear a teacher talking. Teachers get frustrated because we have to ask them so many times what they've said. Sometimes when I put a new mask on from the school, even the scent makes me feel sick. Please make masks optional. Next is Clay Morris. Please continue to enforce the use of masks in schools. This has allowed us to keep our COVID-19 infection rates relatively low and keep our doors open to in-person learning. Removing the requirement now will cause more chaos in our buildings than this small anti-mask protest has already caused. Many of my students have told me that they do not feel safe around people not wearing masks and that they would not continue to learn in person. Consistency for our students is precious in the midst of this difficult and confusing year. For the sake of the consistency that we can provide in public school, I believe as the assurance that we as a public entity care about the well-being of all students and personnel, please do not change our mask policy. Next is Ashley Enderman. I address you today to voice my request for mask choice at W I S D. First, the data simply does not support the mandatory use of masks by school-aged children. There are however, many real-life examples of other school, states, and countries who have not had mask mandates and have had similar, if not better, outcomes in our area. The numbers do not support such measures. There are plenty of studies to support choice. Second, you say the majority wants masks in place. That is pure conjecture and has no basis in actual fact because you haven't bothered to survey anyone. People are very reluctant to even join this debate or stand up for themselves for fear of being harassed, brilliant, or worse because of the intimidation tactics and propaganda used to create so much hate towards people who want choice. Even if you believe this is the minority speaking, that should not sway your vote one way or another. We do not live by mob rule where the majority decides the fate of marginalized from minorities, remember? Third, this will have a much greater impact on our community as many will ultimately decide to take their kids out of W I S D. My kids will be school-aged soon and I will not have been influenced by this fear and propaganda. All this has managed to do is divide a town and teach our kids to be fearful. Fear of others, fear of their environment, fear of germs, and fear of the world. The psychological effects of this will be irreversible. Finally, since we are advocating for choice, I want to remind the board that if a student or staff who is concerned has the freedom to wear double or triple masks, a face shield, or any other protective gear that is available on the market and keep your distance. Next is Marcus Gitterly, M.D. I write this comment in support of maintaining the mask requirement for the remainder of the school year. It is minimally burdensome, yet provides a significant measure of protection against transmission of SARS-CoV-2 because students and faculty as well as other personnel. New, more infectious strains are becoming increasingly prevalent in the U.S. and are expected to become the dominant form of the virus very soon. Rather than risk a significant outbreak, I would caution the district to maintain a risk-averse posture and continue the strict masking policy in place at the end of the year. As a hospital-based, based physician and chief of medical staff, I can affirm the value of this simple, cost-effective method of reducing the transmission of a potentially deadly virus. And furthermore, I can affirm that it complements efforts to vaccinate the general public and support prudent efforts to reopen our economy. Let's stay on track and stay safe. Next is Eric Schneider. We are 81 days into 2021 and in those 81 days, there have been 109 Hayes County residents that died due to complications with COVID-19. 235 members of our community have died in the past another month due to the spread of this aggressive virus. It has been scientifically proven that children do not typically show symptoms of COVID-19 and those that do have a mild to moderate case. But children are not the ones in danger if our protective measures are reversed. Because it is very difficult, if not impossible, for family members to isolate themselves away from their sick children, the virus quickly spreads throughout the household. No child wants to feel responsible for making their family sick and potentially causing a family member to be hospitalized or even die. Removing the mandate of required facial coverage on campus would be a massive step backwards. And we have seen our seven-day positivity rate and number of new cases per day trend downward since the middle of February. We are still nowhere near being through this global pandemic. The Hayes County Local Health Department is anticipating a new surge of cases over the next couple of weeks that will be in direct correlation to exposures that occurred over spring break and to establishments operating at larger capacities. Some of your staff have been vaccinated now, but the vaccine itself is not 100% effective. Staff members can and will contract COVID-19 should cases begin to spread through the students on campus, causing potential closures of classrooms, shortages of teachers, and more disruptions of the students' learning process. At this time, it is still the recommendation of the Hayes County- At this time, it is still the recommendation of the Hayes County Local Health Department that all residents are strongly encouraged to wear face covering and continue to social distance when around anyone that is not a household contact. Please make the right decision and choose proven science over the slight discomfort of wearing a mask. I know there is COVID-19 fatigue growing throughout the community, but we must all continue to work together to keep the spread of this disease to a minimal rather than celebrate it before we cross the finish line. Sincerely, Eric Schneider, Epidemiologist, Hayes County Local Health Department. Next is Douglas Holberg. I've lived in the Wimberly area since 1987. The mask issue is highly politically charged and as such causes individuals to take one side or the other regardless of the science. An excellent summary of the research on efficacy of masks written by Swiss Policy Research, March 2021, can be found at SWPRS.org/face-masks-evidence. I trust these findings because I believe the mask issue is far less political in Switzerland than it is here. The opening statement, "So far, most studies found little to no evidence for the effectiveness of cloth face masks in the general population, neither as personal protective equipment nor as a source control." The article states the following. Danish randomized controlled trial of 6,000 participants found no statistically significant effect of high-quality medical face masks against SARS-CoV-2 infection in a community setting. In February 2021, European CDC found no significant evidence supporting the effectiveness of non-medical and medical face masks in the community. The SWPRS article cites and sources numerous studies and statistics, all pretty much indicating that masks are ineffective. It is my opinion that masks are being used as a political tool for social manipulation to dehumanize and fracture society and for virtue signaling. There's no evidence that wearing of masks will make the Wimberly ISD population safer, and thus should not be required. Respectfully, Douglas Holberg, PhD. Next is Grandparent of a Fourth Grader. I am the grandparent of a fourth grader at Jacob'sville Elementary. I would like to address the mask mandate and respectfully ask that the board lift the mask requirements that the students are being asked to follow. Governor Abbott has lifted the statewide mandate, and I believe that each student and their parent should be allowed to make their own decisions regarding their own health. There are signs that indicates the harm that can come from wearing a mask for extended periods of time. Myself, I've experienced headaches and fatigue from wearing one, and my grandson has experienced similar symptoms. Thank you for allowing me to be heard, and I also thank you in advance for making the right decision, which I believe is allowing the students in Wimberly schools to make their own decisions regarding the wearing of masks, and also for the non-mask-wearing students to not be forced into being separated from the other students. I believe it is time to open everything up and stop living in fear. Again, thank you for your time. God bless Wimberly. God bless America. God bless Texas. Next is Adam Milo. We respectfully request that masking schools be made optional. This issue is much bigger than just wearing a piece of cloth on your face. Anyone can wear a mask as a choice, but all people should no longer be forced to wear masks. Anyone in fear can get the vaccination, double or triple mask, social distance, or attend school virtually. The masks are not proven to be effective and are hindering the social and educational process at school. Our children need to be able to share smiles again and not live in the fear or isolation that the masks promote. Next is Sandra Herrera. Mr. York and members of the school board, I'm writing to ask you to consider voting for the optional mask. I deny all my children to wear masks all day long. It's not healthy. My daughter has allergy-induced asthma, and by wearing the mask, her allergies are worsening. She has also dealt with a significant increase of headaches in 2020 and 2021. I understand that some individuals prefer to wear masks because they believe it will protect them. I respect what they believe. However, I would like for my children to have the option to not wear a mask. Next is Grandparent. I'm asking that we let the parents and their children make the decision concerning the wearing of a mask. Governor Abbott lifted the mask mandate, so now it is time to follow through. The numbers of COVID cases have dropped greatly, and we cannot teach our children to live in fear. For those that choose to wear the mask, that is their choice. What is unfair is to separate the children into separate learning areas. There has to come a point when you open up. We can't go on the rest of our lives living with a mask on. There is now a vaccine available for all who wish to take it. If you are concerned, get the vaccine, but let's open up our schools and our businesses. We cannot let this virus rule our lives. We need to have common sense. I'm in the compromised group, so I have to wear a mask when I go out. I will say that there is also consequences of this. The masks give me migraines and extreme fatigue, and the isolation is not good for mental health. I don't ask schools and businesses to close down. It's up to me to take care of my health. I personally have never heard of a child getting COVID. Do you not think away from school, these children don't get together and play and do so without a mask? So why ask them to wear one in school? I'm praying for your decision about this issue. Hopefully, you are also praying about your decision. Thank you for letting me express my opinion. Next is Thomas Allen. We want to express our sincere and emphatic request that you vote to lift the mask mandate and allow the children and faculty of the Wimberly ISD to exercise freedom of choice in this regard. The science has clearly shown that children are not at high risk of catching or spreading COVID. Please join with many of the nearby school districts that have lifted the mandate and allowed parents, children to choose. In addition to the physical complications of wearing masks, the evidence further indicates that masks and lack of social contact causes harmful mental health issues among teens and children. Further, all at-risk faculty should have had the opportunity to receive vaccinations by this time. Quality education includes protecting the constitutional liberties of the children. By allowing students to attend school and be given the liberty to choose to wear or not wear face coverings would ensure that everyone has the ability to participate in the social, economic, and educational opportunities available. Next is Aaron Wallace. Please allow our students and teachers the freedom of mask choice. Medical interventions such as masks should never have been mandated in the first place. Now that the statewide mandate is lifted, Wimberly should have the freedom to choose alongside districts such as Kamau, Lubbock, and others. A recent release by the CDC showed that mask use only contributed to a 1.9% decrease in cases. It has been proven by other studies that long-term mask usage, particularly by those untrained and proper mask usage, has contributed to other health issues, physical and mental. I think we can all agree that students are, on the whole, not engaging in proper mask usage, such as not touching them and changing them regularly. I'm not asking that masks be banned. Those who wish to wear them should be allowed to do so, but those who wish not to wear them should have the same choice. Thank you. Next is Brooke Pollak. Thank you for adding mask choice as a discussion item to the board meeting agenda for tonight. We are hopeful that we will see a vote take place tonight. WISD was one of the first districts to send students back to school in August. It was what was best for the students. We all wanted them to be in the classrooms, learning from the start of the school year. We still applaud you for helping in that decision, for doing what's best for our children at the beginning of the school year. It is now seven months later, and we still need to do what's best for our children. We cannot just continue on as if all mandates are the same, as if it's still August 2020. The mandates have changed. The vaccines are here for those that want them, and the time is now to give these students a choice to take their mask off and show their smiles again. The WISD board has stood up in the past to protect our children's purity, their mental well-being, and their rights. Please do the right thing and stand up for WISD students and WISD teachers to give them a choice. Let every Wimberly parent, student, and teacher decide what is best for them, their health, and their family. It's messy. It's a lot of unknowns. We've never lived in times like this, but yet here we are. Please give our children a chance to choose. Thank you for reading this and giving my children an opportunity to smile again. Next is Tial Ruiz. I'm a fourth grader at JWE and would like the choice to not have to wear a mask anymore. If others want to wear one, that is okay. I do not want to wear one anymore. I've gotten so many headaches from wearing a mask. I come home sick some days, and it's hard to get homework done. No one can hear me, and I have a hard time hearing my teachers and friends. I want my immune system to have the chance to work properly. Please vote to give us a choice. Next is Kristin McCollum. My job is to teach. I want every student that wants to learn in my classroom. I believe the best way to make that happen is for students to be given mask choice. Private schools in the area, Hayes Travis, have been mask optional from the get-go, and their numbers are significantly lower than ours. On the WISD campuses that have had no masks, there's the lowest occurrence of virus spreading. I have three kids in the district. These kids are not masking outside of school. I see them at parties, games, the river, extracurriculars, et cetera. I just want all kids back in my room with the ability to do what makes them feel safe. If you want to wear your mask, great. If not, great. We can learn and respect each other's choice. As a teacher, I've been given two opportunities through the district to be vaccinated. I also have control over my classroom. I can put floor tape around my desk and choose to stay behind it and not allow kids to come in my space if I so choose. I can tell a student if they want individual one-on-one help requiring close proximity, they would have to mask. I can wear a mask, or two. I know many teachers are tired of having to get on to kids about masks. I know many teachers who support mask choice but have expressed fear of speaking out in fear of making other teachers, parents, board members, et cetera angry at them. I know many teachers who are not currently enforcing the mask rule according to my kids and their friends, which leads to inconsistencies and issues with the students, where some classes do and some don't. I think the best choice is to leave this choice, the best choice is to leave this choice up to the parents and students now that vaccines are readily available. Next is Dana Sellers. Masks should never have been forced and should always been a choice, especially since children are the least likely to get the virus and least likely to spread it. When the solution becomes more harmful and damaging than the problem itself, it's time to reevaluate. Let's not forget the problem has a 99.9% survival rate for most of the population. Also, well, people should never, ever have been quarantined. Lousy Fauci is the one who said masks and quarantines are for the sick. Yet fear made people do crazy things. So let's stop all the unnecessary nonsense that has been inflicted on these precious kids and hope they will be able to fully recover from the abuse that has been forced on them by the ones that should have had their best interest in mind at the very beginning. Next is Amber Shand. I've been teaching for 18 years. Every year, I work hard to ensure all my students feel safe, comfortable, and respected in my classroom. This year is no different in that regard. What is different are the countless number of challenges we have faced as educators in order to give our students the most normal year possible. Quite honestly, I've learned things this year I never knew I'd need to know in order to give my students a positive and successful first year in junior high. I'm taking it very personal for a group of community members to take for granted how hard we are working to finish this year strong by simply asking that we keep our current plan in place. We've given everything we have to provide our students with a positive learning environment during a challenging time. Creating this stressful and major disruption to our learning has been extremely disheartening. Next is Ivy Jane Beck. I hope the school board will listen to the students and parents. We are over wearing these every day to every school event. We have followed the rules for a very long time, and it should be our choice. I don't make fun or pick on kids that want to wear a face mask, but it was sad last week when a lot of us made the choice to go mask-free, but we were not treated the same. We are good, well-mannered kids that have just had enough of this. We had to listen to other kids tell us that we were making it hard on teachers and had to listen to some teachers and coaches treat us differently because we were trying to get this to change for everyone. My hope is that this ends today, if not in the near, very near future. If you want to wear a mask and feel it keeps you safe, that is your choice, but I should have a choice too. Next is Brax Beck. From my perspective, we have people worrying about our health, and we feel there's nothing to worry about. It is our God-given right to make our health our own responsibility. If you choose to continue wearing a face covering, that should be your choice, just like if you didn't want to wear one. How you protect yourself from this disease is optional, and we chose not to wear one. The number of kids that had to hang out in the library for not wearing a mask in no way reflects the kids that agree with this statement. Many kids were allowed to go to their classes all day without masks on when they were in the classroom and have been doing this all year, and many, many kids that feel this way just don't do in-person learning at all. If we can make this choice, this a choice, I hope to have many of my friends back in school, face to face, the way schools should be all over. Next is Rachel Wright. I'm in favor of allowing students and staff the option to be masked pre-weekly masks on campus. As of today, March 22, 2021, there are zero reported cases on campus. Per the governor today, the seven-day COVID positivity rate dropped to 5.81%. That is the lowest since May of last year and the second lowest recorded in the last 12 months. Hospitalizations continue to decline. The number of Texans getting COVID shots continues to increase. It's time to make masks a voluntary choice on the Wimberly campus. Next is Viardra Robertson. I would like to see a change in the current WISD return-to-school handbook regarding masks. I would like to see a choice on wearing masks for students, faculty, and staff. There are so many inconsistencies in the three schools my children attend. Many of the high school teachers don't enforce masks, so they only wear them in the hallways. The junior high is by far the strictest, but does have some teachers that allow them to pull them down. JWE, they don't wear masks at their desks, sit six feet apart at lunch, but allowed to play outside together mask-free. There are a few districts that haven't worn masks all year, and one district that didn't even isolate a single student and didn't have a single outbreak. Many districts lifted their mask mandate after the governor's orders. It's time we make our decisions using logic and facts instead of making irrational decisions based on fear alone. Next is Chris Chesser. Please consider amending regulations allowing for student choice of wearing masks on WISD campuses. I'm not necessarily asking for a total reversal of mask regulations, but asking for you to consider adjusting current regulations to allow for those who choose to go without masks. In addition, today, the CDC released new guidelines for schools saying that three-foot social distancing is all that is needed now with a mask. I ask you to also consider adjusting some social distance regulations along CDC guidelines if continuing to enforce mask regulations. HTTPS backslash backslash www.cmbc.com backslash 2021 backslash zero three backslash one nine backslash CDC dash shortens dash social dash distancing dash guidelines dash four dash schools dash two dash three dash feet dash with dash masks dot html. Next is Jake Duel. My name is Jake Duel, and I'm a seventh grader at Danforth. I'd like to say that having the freedom to choose if I want to wear a mask while at school is important to me. I like to breathe freely, and my freedom is a God-given right afforded to me by my Father in heaven that no one should be able to take away. Also, I think that keeping students from their athletic period at the end of the day is wrong. I run track. I've not been able to practice my events with coaches to coach me since March 10th because I've been made to miss my athletic class. We have a meet this week that I'm not prepared for. Please give students the freedom they deserve. Respectfully submitted, Jake Duel. Next is Dwayne Liptak. I believe it is time to drop the mask mandate for WISD entirely and leave it up to the individual student and parents. Youth-to-youth infection transmission has been exceedingly rare for COVID-19, and in practice, the mask mandate has largely been a placebo that isn't implemented in any useful way. I dropped one of our children off at Wimberly Elementary, and there are dozens and dozens of children in close proximity playing without masks, not social distancing, every single morning, yet no meaningful outbreak has occurred. This alone should show that the masks are a symbolic gesture at best, with no consequence to them not being used. When masks are removed, as they are for PE and lunch in all grades, I'm sure they're being laid down on all manner of unsanitary surfaces and then being put back on for the remainder of the day, which is probably worse for the health of the children than actually catching COVID. I could see minor exceptions, such as providing or requiring a mask for children who report to the nurse's office and are exhibiting fever or other symptoms until they can be picked up. Give our children their freedom of their faces back and let them exercise social skills without wearing muzzles. Social distancing, cleaning, and sneeze guards are no doubt doing far more than this silly mask shiray. So if you care about actual prevention, continue those measures. Next is Darren White. Good evening. First and foremost, thank you for your time and all that you do for WISD and the community. I will try to be brief. Please continue to require masks to be worn by students and staff as per the policy approved on 7/20/2020. As a parent of students in two of our schools, I feel that until all teachers and eventually students have been vaccinated, it wouldn't be prudent to rescind the mask mandate. I value in-person learning, and I feel it is better for my children to be physically present at school. While online learning is a viable option, it is a poor substitute for in-person classes. Kids who are out of school learn more. However, I would have to reconsider sending my kids to school if masks are not required at this point. This would mean I would have to accept an inferior mode of learning, online classes. For my children, even though they have been following WISD guidelines from the beginning of the school year, that seems unfair to me and sends the message that the guidelines don't need to be followed. Those are my concerns as a parent, but I am also a teacher in WISD and proud to be one. I'm proud that we, as teachers and administrators, have implemented the plan given to us in August, despite numerous hurdles and difficulties. Quite simply, it has worked. We have students learning in class and online safely. They have largely not gotten sick. There hasn't even been, to my knowledge, a serious case of the seasonal flu passing around in classes. The masks have worked. While I acknowledge that they are uncomfortable and impractical for some subjects, like band and ASL, to name a few, they have prevented transmission of a deadly virus on our campuses. Please do not stop now. There are only 10 more weeks of school. We have made a seemingly impossible situation possible. Do not take away the one thing that has kept our students, teachers, staff, and everyone in the community, because kids do go home safe. Thank you for your time and attention. Next is Shelley Benson. Please do not consider changing the masking policies until at least after this school year is concluded. I am a nurse anesthesiast and have seen firsthand the devastation COVID-19 has caused for young and old, healthy and unhealthy. We have made huge progress that could be threatened by a premature change in masking requirements. We do not have a large enough portion of our population vaccinated yet to warrant a change. The cases are already on the rise nationwide from spring break travel and the variants that are as much as four times more contagious than the original. A change now would be like pulling out your first-string players in a playoff game inside. Wimberly ISD thus far has been a great example of how to continue in school learning with the lowest risk possible to its students and their families. I realize everyone is exhausted and tired of masking, but changing now will most likely drag out this fight longer. The students are accustomed to wearing masks and can make it through the end of the school year. I know some are protesting masking, but giving in to those few will set a bad precedent for the rest of the students. They need our guidance and good example as a community now more than ever. Hopefully, next year will look much different, and we can resume a life that's more like it was pre-COVID. Thank you for your consideration. Shelley Benson. The last bullet comment is from Alex Davenport. My name is Alex Davenport. My name is Alex Davenport. I'm a student at WHS Learning Virtually. It has come to my attention that mandatory mask wearing could be discontinued throughout our district, but I urge you to not go through with this for many reasons. Including the obvious issues of safety, the futility of any action towards changing our mask wearing policy at this time and my own personal plea that I desperately hope you will listen to. Firstly, I am sure that we are all aware of the health hazards making masking optional will pose. And that most of us know that many of our teachers and most, if not all of our students have yet to be vaccinated. If mask wearing becomes optional, that leaves all of the unvaccinated students, teachers, and staff on school vulnerable to a life threatening virus. As it is their neighbor's mask to keep them safe. And as more people decide to stop wearing their masks, more people are left unprotected without a say in their own safety. Secondly, the mask mandate was put in place to keep everyone safe. It was repealed on a state level mainly due to economic struggle. However, schools are not here to make money. They are here to teach. And if our schools make this decision based on what the state is doing, the choice made is based on an economic issue they should not factor into our situation. Our district has no need to repeal the mask mandate besides the momentary discomfort many students, parents, and teachers are so frustrated with. I'm positive however, there would be a much more uncomfortable situation if a loved one or any member of your community were to die simply because people felt uncomfortable wearing masks. It's not worth the risk. Finally, I want to appeal to you in a significantly less formal manner as myself, a girl desperate to go back to anything even remotely normal. Being an online learner, I sit in my room for seven hours a day staring at my screen, trying to learn a lesson that isn't even really directed at me. It's for the in-person students. I struggle to learn as I never have before. And after a few months, my motivations even try had faded to a point that would have terrified the person I was before this pandemic. I've drifted apart from my friends and my social anxiety has skyrocketed due to a lack of social connection. I lost interest in the things I used to love. I struggled with my body and moved to the internet and social media to watch things look normal, to see people, to not feel so alone. It has been a painful year for me and I know I'm not alone in this feeling. I need to go back, as terrifying as the idea currently is to me, because as dramatic as it may sound, I'm scared I'm losing myself. And I cannot go back if masking is not mandatory. I sacrificed too much at this point to throw it all away now. Everyone has lost something to this pandemic. We've all struggled and suffered, but we cannot abandon all the measures we took so tediously all year now. Now that things are finally getting better, please keep mandatory masking. We can do this. Considerate Alex Davenport. And that concludes public comment.
Thank you, Alan. I know that was a lot of work for you to read all those comments. So a reminder that the board's not allowed to directly address any specific public comment. So we're going to move on in, into our agenda here. And at this time, I'd like to, oh yeah, I'm sorry, let's take a break, sorry. Break.
Okay, welcome back. We're gonna have a break and like to return to our agenda. And we're gonna move to item number three, which is discussion and possible action on any modification to our WISD return to school procedures handbook, which was approved on July 20, 2020. And I'd like to just open this up for discussion. We have several members, if not all the members from our COVID task force here. And I'd like to see if any of the board has questions down, they've recently met. See if we have any recommendations, that sort of thing. So I'm just gonna open it up for discussion.
Well, I would say before we get into a lot of discussion, it would be good to know what their recommendation to us is.
No, that's a great idea.
Then we can start on some discussion.
Yeah, I mean, is there a recommendation?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think the task force actually meets and votes and all of that. But you know, are there any comments? And we're all queer from some teachers, we're medical professionals. We're from a lot of families in the community. And there's a, there's a lot of different information, you know, that's, that's kind of been shared. And we're, you know, we're trying to sort through that on a very local level here and figure out what the best approach is for the last nine weeks of school for our district. And that, and, and I think it's not really appropriate, at least my personal opinion is, it's not appropriate for me as a, you know, school board member that's not in it, the day-to-day business running the schools to, you know, form an opinion without hearing from our administrative staff, you know, and our representatives that are here tonight. So I'd welcome any of you to jump in, but I don't want to pressure anybody to put anybody on the spot either.
Well, we did meet before the meeting, so they can, okay. The, and, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and say the, the recommendation coming from the COVID task force, which you see right here is to make no change. And then they, they have their own.
Girl, if you would, please.
Um, so Mr. York speaks for the task force in, in whole. Um, it wouldn't be right for me to speak for them at all, but I would like to share with you the information I shared with them that, that informed that, um, you know, that, that, uh, not really decision, we're not decision-making, but that opinion about what we can best moving forward. At the, at the beginning of our protocols, it basically says that, that, um, that we're going to put our protocols in place, um, for school opening, uh, that our plan will follow the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Texas Education Agency, and state and local health officials. And so we heard tonight from Eric Schneider, a local health department epidemiologist, who has every single COVID case in our county reporting directly to him. He's responsible for doing the, um, investigation on where those outbreaks and how they happen and what's safe and what's not safe in the county. And it was his recommendation to me earlier before I came to the task force and then clear in his message tonight to the public, that it's his recommendation that we maintain masks and our other protocols in place, that we are not at a point in our community, our county, that it's safe to remove them. It would be a step backwards. We need to, for lack of a better word, we need to stay the course. It's not that masks are here forever, they will be retired or removed in schools. His opinion and the opinion of the health department is that now is not the time. There are a couple of concerns that lead to that, um, opinion. One is that they have, as a, as a public health community at the national, state, and local level, the mutations and variants of virus that are coming forward. You have to have a very large kind of accumulation of those variants to test them and to use them to find out how infectious are they, are they linked to broader problems, deeper problems, more severe infections? And the public health department, because these variants which propagate and come up when you have a big rise in cases, these variants are the result of this most recent rise in infection. And the public health department, both nationally, at the state level, and at the county level, has not had an opportunity yet to respond and to determine the nature of that threat, both at the national, at the state, at the local, and at the Wimberly ISD level. We simply don't know.
Sorry, just work. So I think it's important. Can the, can the general public that's listening in on this message here, our, our colleagues and task force here? Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, because I certainly don't want to re-articulate.
That's okay. So then we're talking about those variants.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't being heard.
So, so that's one concern. The second concern is that we have had a really great news precipitous fall in case counts at the national level, at the state level, at the county level, and at the Wimberly level. But it didn't fall all the way down to where it was like in mid-September when things were going really smoothly and we thought we're gonna be great. It hasn't fallen all the way down. It stalled, and it looks like it might be gonna take a little tick up. Now, the good news is that we really hope in the public health community that because of the number of people who were infected at the last surge and the number of vaccines we have, that it's not gonna do another huge way. But that's hope. That hasn't materialized. And we have certainly had the last week and the following week where, you know, we have a big university in our county. That, that university has influenced case counts when they had big vacations before. Also, there's people in our own school district who travel and then come back. Those variants that have been more prevalent in New York, Florida, and other places in the country could very well come back and create a high, more highly infectious environment in our local community, both at the county level and at the Wimberly level, and certainly in our schools. So that, the travel, the activities, the social interactions of spring break lead our community epidemiologists and health department to say, now is not the time. What they would like for us to do is give, give them an opportunity to see what's gonna happen after this spring break. And it takes several weeks to figure that out and then also see what's gonna happen with variants. Last but not least, you know, immunization and vaccination is going well. We certainly, with the loosening of, of kind of restrictions on who can get it, allowing teachers and staff in our, in our, in our school district to get it. Everyone who needed or want, not needed, everybody who wanted a vaccine was given an opportunity to receive that the week before spring break. And they were given, uh, there was a big day, Texas Department of Emergency Management working with the schools in our school district. Thank you. Reach out to them. Thank you for Ross for being a representative there. She can tell you more about that. But they, we vaccinated everyone who wanted to be vaccinated on, either before that time. I mean, I was vaccinated in December because I'm a healthcare worker. But we've been working that staff and faculty that were vaccinated on Friday, the 12th, or having the opportunity to. They still have three weeks to wait before they get their second vaccine, another two weeks to wait for immunity to develop. So that puts us at like April 16th before those, those who were vaccinated by the 12th have an opportunity to build immunity and maximize immunity. So that's another, another, you know, another leg on the stool for waiting until we know where we're gonna be in six weeks, four weeks, four to six weeks about travel, variant, and vaccine. For, you know, for my, for my information for the school district, the other thing that's much more close in is that the information that I've been learning since the beginning of the pandemic is a very, is a pretty strange story. It comes from, um, the research community in the United States, including the Center for Disease Control, John Hopkins, Harvard Medical. These peer-reviewed, peer-evaluating scientific studies. They come through the CDC, from the health department, and I attend those healthcare provider meetings once a week online. And Dr. Schubert, who's the head epidemiologist in the state of Texas, reviews that research that's emerging on this emerging disease every single week. And I've been doing that since March, well, maybe probably May, May, May of last year. So, you know, four times a month for many, many months or hours at a time. And so while I know that there's a lot of confusing and conflicting ideas about mask use and hand sanitizer and all those things, from what I hear from that kind of information, scientific studies, double-blind, repeatable, peer-reviewed, published, produced through scientific community in America, those studies basically say, number one, masks help. They're the single best method of preventing transmission indoor closed spaces, especially when distancing is different. There's not any confusion about that. There is a lot of confusion about masks, but not from that source. So that's the information that I bring to the table on that. The next thing is just kind of a practical issue. Because that information is not for public distribution at the time it comes, that, you know, that needs to go through their public office, a lot of times we'll see an inclination or a movement in transmission or things that we, it looks like are gonna develop, but we don't have all of the facts in mind enough to put it on the news. But we'll start to sort of say, okay, you know, it looks like most of COVID spread doesn't happen in classroom. That doesn't mean it's not associated with social activity outside of classrooms that are brought in or family that are brought in. But in the classroom, when there's distancing and masks and the hand sanitizer and cleaning and air filters are used, you're not seeing clusters erupt in that environment. And so you can, what we did, pretty much starting in mid-fall, was we monitored a lot of students instead of quarantining every single person that might have been in a classroom if the students were masked, if they were compliant with masks. I call teachers and say, are the children, is this, and we look at the seating charts. And we've monitored a lot of children, which allowed us to keep kids in classrooms. And we were successful with that. It didn't see a rise in classroom cases, even when we were monitoring all but those who were closest. So you might say, okay, you sat next to this child one time, one day, but you didn't ride to school with them. You didn't go sleep over at their house. You don't eat with them or work out with them in the weight room. You can monitor that kid instead of quarantining them. If you take those masks out of those classrooms, that flexibility of being able to monitor rather than quarantine really won't, won't be, won't be as possible if children are not wearing masks. And our idea of keeping schools open and keeping kids in chairs becomes much more difficult for me. So that's me saying, hey, this is gonna be harder. I don't mind calling families and saying their children have been quarantined. You know, it gives me an opportunity, a lot of education, but, um, that takes them out of the classroom for at least 10 days, you know? So, um, that increased vulnerability, I think, should be considered as a, as a, before we, I could lift any of those. I'll make sure I said everything that I think I would say. I did, you know, I did, um, there's a lot of things I've learned this year, what the medical community, public health community would call anecdotal. Hey, I noticed this was happening. But I don't really feel like that information is what you need to hear from me. If you want to sit down and talk with me about it another time, that's great, but that's not really decision-making information. The decision-making information, I feel like that you need to me, comes from the stream of information that I've shared with you. Any specific questions, be happy to answer.
That's really helpful information, Girl. Thank you so much for presenting that.
Thank you for asking for it.
Ma'am.
Go ahead. Could you dig in deeper on the complications in your role and responsibility in the district? If masks were to be an option, what it means? You gave us an example of monitoring quarantine. Could you dig a little deeper into that so that we can get an idea of what that means in your day-to-day? And what it means to the people who are here and send the kids to school here?
Yeah. Um, I think when we started out, we were really concerned that we were gonna be sending home whole classrooms of kids on a regular basis and shutting down campuses. There wasn't gonna be any football or volleyball or ag or any of the, and we were worried, weren't we? I mean, I feel like all this. I think that's why we worked so hard, you know, to put these things in place. And what we've seen is that the only place where I've had to send home whole classrooms of children has been on the campus where there's no masks. Because when someone in that environment got sick, tested positive, there was no choice. I couldn't say, well, look, everybody in the room had a mask on. They were sitting two or three feet apart. They were facing forward. They weren't working in groups that day. Nobody took their mask off. The teachers were even go, go so far as to say, well, I let them come in and they had a snack, but they, they separated while they had their snack, and then they went back to their regular seats. I looked at seating chart. So I monitored, and I monitored, or we monitored a lot, a lot. Me, the athletic director, the other nurses, the teachers, the council. We monitored a lot of children for two weeks while somebody that might have infected them went home to quarantine. We monitored those children and allowed them to continue to study in school, allowed them to continue to go to practice and to participate in their activities. And Eric Schneider, our health department partner, that was his recommendation. We did that with his help. And we monitored those kids, and I'm not gonna say we never saw somebody come up positive from a classroom setting. But usually what happened, this is that anecdotal information that's hard, you know, you're asking, I'm gonna give it to you, but I, it's hard because I don't have any, I like data, you know? The anecdotal information I will tell you is that, um, usually when you saw a group of people get infected that had, they had contact with one another, it was either a family, the vast majority, or it was an extracurricular activity group. The only group I had to quarantine apart from the campus with no masks was an extracurricular group that traveled together, ate together, even spent some nights together, that outside. And then, and then we had, you know, we had a, a teacher on, teacher staff on staff, small, small cluster early on, before everybody who was kind of a teacher staff person really understood they should be wearing their masks around each other. You know, and, and also before they got to the point where they understood that if they were sick, they used to come to school with colds, you know, because that, teachers don't call in sick. Administrators don't call in sick unless they've got a fever. So it was hard to get them educated into, look, if you're having severe allergies or something, I need you to call, tell me if we need to get us up. So those things changed through the monitoring. Monitoring allowed us not to do that. The other thing is, we didn't shut down teams if one person came up positive on COVID. We monitored that team and coaches monitored. We're talking over and over again.
You're saying you were able to responsibly make that decision based on the fact that those kids and the adults participating with you had the protection of, of.
Masks. And, and, and because we were doing such hard work here with masks and hand sanitizing and cleaning, our partner at the health department helped me with that, learned how to do that. And, I mean, I'm not a contact tracer from Big Dog. I got trained. But I learned how to do this, starting in July of this year. And it was, you know, the local health department that walked me through that and helped me make those decisions. And for months in the year, every single contact decision was talked over with the county epidemiologist until I kind of got the feel for it, you know? Now I need to talk, you know, I don't need to call every single time. I'm sure he's appreciative of that. But, um, I, I mean, I have his cell phone number, but he's like, Billy, okay, it's Saturday, Drell. So, um, but that's, that's, you know, that he's worked really hard this year too. But, but they walked us through that. That partnership with them has been pivotal in keeping our schools open. So I, I can't say enough, when it comes to a board meeting and sends us a letter that says it's not time yet, how much weight I give them. Everything. I give it everything.
Duane, I was gonna also ask for maybe a little input on the faculty survey that we sent out.
So did you, uh, everybody saw the, the survey? It was 51, it was 59% keep masks in place, it was 41% to eliminate now. Some of the teachers wish we would have had a third question. But I don't, I don't know that that would have changed the, the survey. And then I shared with you guys the comments that, that were made. The majority of them fell within the vaccine. Give us time, we can have the vaccine. Oh, I'm trying to think of a couple of others. The vaccine was the big thing and, um,
Drell, you said that would be April 16th would give them.
April 16th, and then, of course, y'all knew on the 19th. You know, so, I mean, that, you know.
Do you remember the other two?
I can't speak to the task force. Task force would like for us to not change that, and I, I agree with that, you know? But if you're.
I'm sorry, do not what?
Not pulling the protocols back. The task force does not want, want us to do that. And I, and I am in alignment with, with you, you know? But if you're looking for, um, you know, is that an end of the year thing? Is that an end of the school year thing? Then certainly, um, your next board meeting, we'll have a couple pieces of information we don't have now. We'll have, what is the response after spring break? And we will have teacher immunity in place for those who choose it. You know, those are two things. Those are two pieces of information. Still, we probably still won't have a good idea of variants, but we might start to see a trend that the health department could address. But, I mean, that, what that's worth.
So just to be clear, we, we feel very confident in the fact that by April 19, 16, 15. I'm sorry, Rob, what you said?
Okay.
It's 15, 15 for 19.
Well, the 16th is the, is two weeks after the Pfizer's second dose for those teachers who have vaccinated on the 12th, which was that Texas Department of Emergency Management thing. And then I think y'all's regularly scheduled meeting is the 19th, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so the 15th.
Correct.
When I'm, when I'm just trying to make sure it's clear, is, is we believe every adult in our district that chooses to get vaccinated, one has the opportunity and two will have enough time to go through the process by April, April the 15th.
Yeah, 6, 6, 15, 15.
So I had a comment on that.
Okay. Now, they didn't all do it, but they all had two.
So I don't know if you all read the board's.
Board's board.
Yeah, sure.
How many, are we able to, are we allowed to talk to how many of them, not by name, but percentage that have volunteered to take the vaccine?
Um, I think, I, the truth is, I'm not allowed to ask them. I kept, I kept this list of, who I kind of sent out a list, well, I did it.
And you're not because of privacy issues, just working?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Brown, we sent a list out, you know, saying, hey, if you want it, want me to help you with it, we can email. And so I did it that way, because it's not very thorough definition.
Can anybody offer your own idea of understanding the, 10% of our staff, 80%?
Pardon me?
10% of our staff, 80% of our staff. Approximately what percentage do we believe have gotten the vaccine?
Roz, are you still here?
Yeah.
You're behind the wall there.
I'm, well.
All right, so can you give me at least a percentage? Is it legal for you guys to?
If it makes anybody uncomfortable for healthcare privacy purposes, we don't necessarily have to delve into all that. But we just, I guess, high level is all we were asking for.
If anyone knows that data, because I have not poked into Roz and, and Drell when we talk about these issues, because, you know, I when we talk about these issues, because, you know, I, I shouldn't be knowing who's vaccinated, who didn't. So that's why it would be very difficult for me to say, uh, if Roz felt comfortable to simply give a percentage.
I, I just don't want to misspeak because it is their health information.
No.
Um, and I know that, uh, the ISD was asked for some of the same information, and we don't keep a record of who received the vaccine, we didn't. We do keep a record, uh, I mean, we, we offered it to everyone, so how many employees do we have?
So, like, close to four hundred.
Um, and it was offered to all of them.
I knew that's why you were hiding behind the wall.
The truth is, I'm not sure what of that information that I do have, I'm allowed to share, it's also a personal sharing.
Yeah, so I understand that's in here today, but I do believe it, it relevant to remain information based off what, what we think we know about this virus, of how many adults are vaccinated in our, in our district. So if, Duane, y'all can work on getting to a.
I can't ask.
Yeah, it's like.
I'm not going to accept not, not knowing a general idea of how many adults in our district. I mean, it is flying blind, I mean, we got to know.
My thing, that comment that was made.
Not going to hold you to a percentage, but if ten percent of them only took it, that means one thing. If ninety percent of them took it, it means, it means another from a health perspective. I mean, that's, that's.
Also the information of it was offered, we know some took it, we know that they are not ready to go until April sixteenth.
So I did, we did, the fact, the question we asked, we asked the question, are you interested in receiving the vaccine? And we got a list of people that were interested in receiving the vaccine, and then we worked with them to give them an opportunity. So that list was like, um, the list of people who said originally, yes, I want the vaccine, was close to half. And then we worked hard to give them an opportunity to, and quite frankly, they didn't all come back and say, you know, I got a lot of hugs in the teachers lounge, and I tried not to get because they didn't have the vaccine. But I didn't, but I didn't, you know, but they didn't report back, you know. But we asked, about half the people responded and said they wanted the vaccine. And that included teachers, secretaries, bus drivers, you know. All it, is that, how's that?
Thank you, that's, that's, that gets a long way.
That's all the information I really did.
One comment that I want to make related to this is that in this, in the teacher survey and the comments, which were like twenty pages, single spaced of comments, which I, I mean, I read through them all and I thank all the teachers for, for giving us that information and sharing their thoughts on this, because it's really important. Um, but there were a few, um, you know, situations where maybe somebody wants that vaccine, but they can't get it for some other reason, or they don't feel safe getting it for some other reason, but they have very much, still have a concern about removing masks from the classroom. So I don't want to discount that as well, because there are some, you know, I think, I think we've got to err on the side of caution, and there were some of those situations.
And there are families, you know, there, the staff and faculties are responsibility, right? It, it, but their families are their responsibility, and we're, you know, supply hasn't caught up with demand quite yet. It's catching up, you know, and we're, we're going to be able to say, everybody who wanted a vaccine, you know, they've got a vaccine probably, you know, in the May, early summer, but we're not there yet. There are still people, you know, at, you know, help at risk people who are struggling to get access to vaccine, who didn't have Texas Department of Health's management help because they were teaching. And some of those are family members and people that work in our school district. And children that go to our school district because there's no vaccine.
Yeah.
Question. The drill.
Yeah.
Obviously, I have the utmost respect for you, that we've been in relationship many, many years and for this whole proof of, of task force vendors here into the superintendent faculty advisory team are in tandem with you on correcting them. Always good to look at the other side of the issue and kind of flush that out as well. Is obviously, we heard plenty from public opinion and all of our inboxes have been, well, like no other issue, this whole school year, in my justification. And certainly, no cause and the like, I'm not complaining to say. I do know that from a couple members of this task group, that prior to spring break, there was some discussion about looking at the issue on April first. As a matter of fact, the exact quote is that possibly on April first, a compromise for those that still would like the mask, for those that do not, uh, would be, whether they're making it or could be at play. That was, you know, a direct quote. So that was prior to spring break, right? So as you go from spring break all the way to when we get back from Easter, right?
That was actually before even we knew teachers could get vaccines.
That was the day of, we met on March third, and then the faculty advisory met thirty minutes after that meeting.
We talked a lot about, we talked a lot about vaccination at that meeting because we didn't know, and I'll share, say, you know, my little doctor in yours who's been, who was probably going to be able to get it vaccinated, you know, I think we can do it next week, and then the next day, it, it, the Texas Department of Health and I said we could get that. So at that point, that was pretty exciting to say, hey, now you're starting to look at that. You had, um, the, I think the, um, there was a little confusion in the notes about what their word, what, what the, what we were compromising. And it was rather than decide now or decide at the end of the day, when shall we revisit? The, the idea was that, am I right? Hey, the idea.
We've got the notes right here.
Because I don't want to speak for the whole team, but, but the idea was we were going to re, that we would say, hey.
You're going to revisit is what we've got written in the notes. We were going to revisit, we talked about April first. We said, why April first, whenever we come back April sixth? And, um, it was not in the form of any kind of recommendation. Um, it's, it's, uh, there was quoted here from you about the nine days after spring break. And then I asked every individual to give me their opinion. And now I'm getting into the notes of the faculty advisory, so that's.
So to my point, that was the discussion that you guys had prior to spring.
When your parents were contacting Mr. Ullman, wanted to, um, have the board call a special meeting.
Right. So now we're the day after spring break, we come back from Easter break, and we can meet. And that will be April the sixth, that we're back in session. So the other side of the issue is, what they're hearing is the can continues to get kicked down the hill when we have zero, you know, instances or cases right now on any of our campuses.
Yeah, right.
And cumulatively, over the course of year, point zero six to five percent. And so they want an option. They obviously want an option, I hear that loud and clear tonight, is, you know, let my kid go mask or unmask, I heard stories of kids playing out in the schoolyard, unmask, kids not wearing masks. Well, of course, all that's going to happen, the idea of ISD, you know, in the country. And, and so I'm just wondering if we could think about setting a date and saying, at this date, masks are optional. Given the fact that our trends look good, and we're, it's a good compromise, it's a win-win for both of the groups, those that favor masks and those that don't like masks at all.
I don't, not sure I would agree with that statement. I mean, we, we already.
What statement would that be, Lauren?
That that would be a win-win for the both groups. I mean, the both groups are not the same amount of people necessarily, or voices, or.
I do know that, Lauren.
Too full, I mean, I'm just basing that based on the number of kids who actually participated in non-masked.
Ross's statement, same, same.
Versus the ones who did not, so there's that. And there's also the fact that our faculty survey has shown that our faculty and our staff don't, you know, they have a sixty, fifty-nine, sixty percent of those people who work for this district do not feel comfortable doing so without the mask protocols and the COVID protocols in place. And so to me, you know, our job is to protect our families and our students and also our staff. And those teachers, they don't have a choice whether or not to come into work, um, every day. Um, and so I think that's a big burden to place on them. We heard from a lot of teachers, both in the survey and on, on email and today, about the burdens that have been placed on them, about the burdens that this whole, this stuff that's been going on the last, you know, couple of days in school has placed on them. And I feel like they've, they've borne a lot this year, and that we need to, um, try to lessen the burden and the worry on them and their families as best that we can. That's my personal feeling, and I think that, you know, again, I, I feel like there's a, there are certainly some people who want mass choice, whatever that means to them. And then there's a lot of other people that, that want to maintain what we're doing to keep as many people safe as possible. So I just, I don't, I don't think, you know, I just wanted to make that.
I'm going to answer your question. So I'm going to, I'm going to shoot for this back like my faculty wants, so not just to use it to the families of parents and children of my school district. It's extraordinarily difficult to be in a state controlled, you know, that's. So I want really hard to show families and children this fact. And so I don't want anything to think about, to be, to show this out of respect. And understand, not only as a nurse, but as a mother, that our parents in our community love and care, cherish and support their children. And I'm not confused about the fact that because they might do it differently, the media, they're not doing the same. Now.
Well, well stated, by the way, thank you.
It's not hard to say we agree with you. So from a healthcare perspective, when should we make that choice? I'm, I'm just going to say that our local health department agrees with us in saying, when you have an opportunity to collect more information about what's going to happen at spring break, various, and different kinds of, sort of, factors. From what, what the field ward employees need to do is know that information to get very fast, accuracy, available, and communicate it to you. And even though I know your family, children, that's what I'm going to do. I've learned after twenty years of working with other people, children and health wellness, that's not everybody's plan. And they're probably going to go up that job parenting here. But the facts about where it's going to be, you know, I can't change that for you. He doesn't know his perspective, and their beliefs, and what's best for them. It's kind of like, oh, I can't change that for you.
I would like to add something too, because a lot of the, um, parents' concerns were mental health. And I want to say from the very beginning, you know, I have held that seat at the table and that has always, always been as important as the physical health in making any kind of decision. So, um, I loved hearing the comments, thank you, we've done a great job, race isn't over yet, right? And, um, it's still a really hard one, but we have, because we function of, of a whole child. What is, we know long-term, this is not good for human beings, we know that. We know as soon as it's safe, we want this more, you know, my, forget about our personal opinions, we, we didn't, you know, they did come to the table, we did, but at the end of the day, the greater good, um, took focus. And he, you know, I saw when some of your rooms were at the top of everybody's list, safe school. You know, we want, for kids to learn, they have to be safe. And, um, it, it's a feeling and it's an actual thing that we have to provide. So we're really trying to balance all of that. Don't think that we haven't lost sleep for over a year over this topic. And, um, uh, so I just wanted to say that out loud, that please note that that mental health is, um, is at the table every time.
Well, you have, you know, a gentleman who I've met personally, Mr. Schneider, and he's saying this, and so he made a recommendation, and another, and another recommendation, and he had another recommendation. Comal's one of the biggest districts around, they're open, they're optional. So it's quite, quite confusing to decipher, you know.
And I, I mean, one of the things that I said to my old, um, my old family, they were bugging me about this was, you know, there, there's been a lot of, there was a lot of conversation from parents about Governor Abbott, what he did and what he didn't do. And so from a healthcare, parent perspective, not from a political perspective, there's been a lot of noise about why he did it, when he did it, and all that. But as a nurse, what I would say is that when you take something and you mandated that the entire state of Texas, that's his authority to do that. And he didn't do it right off the bat, because he got a lot of pressure to do it before he did do it. When he did it, it was because he believed that many, many counties, all counties of Texas were struck, and therefore a statewide mandate was proclaimed. And quite frankly, right now, there are counties in Texas who are not having it, because we, although Hays County just happened, covered it with. And so what he did when he looked at the mandate, what he agreed to lift or not, was he basically said, okay, now I don't think it's necessary to have a statewide mandate. I believe it is reasonable for local communities in conjunction with their health department to make good, solid local decisions. And the commissioner of education agreed with that when it came to schools, it's true for our businesses, you know, they make decisions about their person. So I don't, I don't have an issue with any of that, because I think that's, it's time, you know, it's not a bad time for us to make those decisions. But the decisions that are being made here tonight need to be made in conjunction with what I know the concerns are for the health and safety of COVID at this moment. And that information partly comes from our local population. I can't really speak to how Comal made the decision on how to talk about it. And this place in my seat, this is my, but I don't, I don't think the governor is very good with all things. It puts y'all on my seat, and me say a lot more than I need to do, but I don't, you know.
Well, this whole thing's about balance, and, and I think what a lot of constituents in our community are saying, uh, whether you agree or disagree with them, is that, that we need to rebalance our circumstance in our school district. And, and I get that, and, or we'll give you a couple of minutes, you know, I, my father-in-law has a, uh, y'all brought some really good points, and we've all been trying to find this. and we've all been trying to find this balance. My father-in-law has a little cabin in Rio Grande, so we went there for spring break. Family and went to all the shops and, and, you know, things you do. Towns and me being a small business owner and just somebody that talks a lot, I start talking to the business owners, usually like Aaron, his shop and stores and, you know, because of the policies of their state, those business owners have just been devastated that been going there for a long time, probably half of them are still in business. And the ones that, that were there were, I mean, they were scratching, they were scratching to get by. We got to talking a little bit more and start talking about education, school board, and stuff like that. Kind of told them what we're doing and where we are and kind of current events, what goes on people's minds and what we're going through. They told me, I heard this from about five or six different business owners, their kids haven't seen a classroom since last February. Now, kind of set the table, this district, I think rightfully, has done everything in our power and you guys are the ones that have run the plays. And, and we cannot be grateful enough to all of you for what you've done, gone through this year, that we have tried our best and, and without a playbook and entered territory to find that right balance just because there is a health and public safety issue with COVID pandemic, but there are many other issues that come along with a healthy society and a healthy community, a healthy school district. Mental health being a huge part of it. The societal things that come with being humans and kids and, and, and educational quality. And, and I don't want people to get the wrong impression about us or anybody else. But I think nationally, and, and I don't believe we're any exception, although I believe we have done better with both. It is abundantly clear, any educator here, please correct me if you feel differently, it is abundantly clear, kids are getting a different education, my words, in traditional school than what they are virtually. In our district, people talk a lot tonight about, you know, follow the lead of other districts. Well, we were leading when we went forward and gave people an option and, and brought our kids back to school or gave them the option to come back to school before any other school district in Hays County. And if not at the same time, the handful of districts around all central Texas. And where are we at today, Dawn? We're, we're at roughly ninety, ninety-five percent of our kids are back in school. So, what that tells a layman like me, they're getting the best education they could possibly get compared to others are doing across the nation. And yet, the extreme example of what I just stated, New Mexico. And, I mean, and again, we're not talking about Cal, we're talking about adjacent states in the south in New Mexico. Their kids haven't been there since February. And if we've been able to do a lot of hard work and have a little bit of luck, balance this whole thing to, to a pretty good degree of providing high levels of education, addressing mental issues, societal issues, and maintaining very low COVID rates, high levels of public health. What I think a lot of constituents in our community are saying now is, is okay, we feel like we've evolved to a different place now as, as a community here. Y'all made a very good point. Texas, my word's a little different than yours. Texas is a big place. Very few things apply statewide to state. West Texas is very different. East Texas is very different, central, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And so, that makes a lot of sense. I mean, our area in Central Texas is the size of a majority of state. So, we, it makes a lot of sense to put things more in a regional or a micro sense. And I fully support the governor's decision that he made a few weeks ago. But I think a lot of people are asking us to at least seriously re-engage in the discussion of of recalculating where we are. And, you know, frankly, and I've told a lot of people this, I, I'm really torn between the issue. I, I don't know what the right answer is on this. I do know what we've done has worked. It's imperfect. This whole situation is imperfect. But I put what we've been able to accomplish from a societal, a mental, and educational perspective up against anybody in this region. And again, y'all deserve ninety-nine point nine percent credit for all that, Dawn, and your team. So, that's kind of where I start from. I don't know how much of a role in those low numbers and accomplishing those things that masks play. That, that's not my, that's, that's not my profession. It's not who I am. And certainly, it's something I'm not gonna be pretentious enough to talk about in any certain, certain terms. But what I do know is comprehensively, what we've done has worked. Now, a lot of people have, have set this time for different reasons, that, that we need to evolve and advance back to a further sense of normalcy. And, and I get that. And, 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 you know, honestly, sitting here today, I don't know if I, I agree or disagree with them. But in my mind, or whatever it was, it's worth, prior to the governor making this announcement, looking at the data, where we are with, with vaccines, herd immunity, et cetera, et cetera. I always had in my mind, pretty set, pretty firm, that we finish out this school year because we're winning. I, I don't, I think by, by every circumstance, big picture, we are, we are winning. I think we're dominating, to be frank. And going to, and for me, as one board member, there would have to be extraordinary, extraordinary circumstances for us not to go in the next school year like you said, it's normal. And my discussion with a lot of parents, they've, they've appreciated at least those comments because they, they see it in its sight. It's just not this perpetual new normal, though. We're gonna go back to, we're gonna go back to what we know as normal. You know, I, I share that out loud just to, for my own sake and to share that with my colleagues on the board. Now, our, our adults in our district being vaccinated means something to me because I understand, you know, I'm a scientist or a doctor, but again, speaking very high, hundred-foot level, this thing affects adults differently than it affects kids. And so, if all our staff is protected, I start moving closer to normalcy will hurt. We seem to be on track to do that for the most part, sometime mid, mid-April. It, it's a tough situation and it's been tough for the world, for certainly for our nation. Our district is no exception, but I think we've, we've handled it exceptionally. I believe we, we have been on the forefront in so many ways. And, and in a quickly non-normal year, we're going to finish this year, most our kids in school, all sports activities continue, all extracurricular activities continue. And, and in my view, that, that is huge, huge. Now, we need to start re-engaging, reassessing it, and look at how we find to that, how we leadership. And I don't know if that's, that's tonight, or if that's two months from now, or a month from now or not. That's dialogue of the board. But that's not how I see it from a comprehensive standpoint. That makes sense to any of you. But if you go outside of this district, you will see a much different world in most circumstances, even within our own state. And that's something I, I know we all carry a lot of.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm asked.
Oh, you have a motion?
So, any comments?
I just had, I wanted to ask if anyone else on the task force that has, wants to say anything?
I would make a motion that masks, masks become optional. I would like for them to become optional on April sixth. But I understand that rationale that you've given us, past four, it makes sense. And so, make a motion that masks become optional on April the sixteenth. And we go into the future and finish up the school year strong.
Motion.
I would second that motion with the caveat that on April sixteenth, we look and see where our population is, what happens after spring break, what kind of variants that we've come up with, that we get on that day. We get some information from what that, what you, that looks like. So, if we could, you know, if we could number it, ten percent of the population had COVID, then we wouldn't do it.
And right now, we're at point zero six one five.
That's, that's just reported.
Yeah, so that's what I talked about this whole year, for the entire school year.
Just a point of order. I think we had a motion, but, and we didn't really have a second. We had kind of amended motion. Are you gonna withdraw your motion or amend it, Rob, or, or how do you want?
I'm not sure what the amendment is.
I think what Ken is asking
We have a true second on the motion, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Ken is asking our COVID committee to probably meet much sooner than the sixteenth. Probably, you know, a couple of days so that, so we can post a meeting for them if necessary. Of course, we do have that meeting on the nineteenth.
Well, let's go back to Ken.
I'm sorry.
He asked me this question. Ken, would you say that the COVID task group prior to April sixteenth would sanction that motion that I just made, and it would be an effect on the sixteenth?
Yes.
Yes. So, I'll add that as my motion, that we allow our students, our faculty to consider using masks or not masks, given the task group will be prior with, for lack of a better word, their sanction, their blessing on the sixteenth of April.
Well, I mean, we talked a lot about, we don't know where the variant's gonna go. We don't know what's gonna happen with that. We don't know what's coming out of spring break. That gives us time to hear some of that, that gives time to look at some of that.
That's why I made the motion for the sixteenth?
Yeah. And
I have a question. Your motion was that masks become optional on the sixteenth. So, the motion is that they will become optional on the sixteenth only if our task force would recommend that? Is that what is?
No, that we look at
Or are you just recommending that we look at it on the sixteenth again?
Yes, that we look and see where we were with spring break, how that worked, where the variants are going, because that was a concern, because we don't know where the variant, we don't know what that looks like, we don't know where we're going with all of that. And I think we can make a better educated guess of that.
We've got way too many things happening.
We're talking about the board getting, I'm a little confused as to, are we talking about the board reconvening on the sixteenth, which is a, which is a Friday?
Before Monday meeting.
Or, and we have a Monday meeting the nineteenth?
Yeah.
I don't understand the, we need to make sure whatever actions taken is understood and doesn't make any sense.
I totally agree. But I mean, I just think that that gives us a lot more time. The sixteen gives us more time to figure out what's going on.
Okay, then I'll make the motion. I withdraw the original motion. Now, I'll make this motion, okay, Mr. President. I make this motion that the board reconvene on April sixteenth to determine if masks will be optional on the next Monday. And prior to that, the COVID task group would have assembled, they might give us a report on April sixteenth. On April sixteenth, therefore, we commit this. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Oh, so, okay, so I just want to be clear. We know what's happening. So, you made the motion that we, we will, the board will have a meeting on Friday, April the sixteenth to reconsider this whole mask issue based on current situation. And that would be the decision point. It wouldn't necessarily translate into Monday's meeting, right? There's no connection there?
Definitely connection there. On the sixteenth, the decision will
It's not connected to the meeting that we will have. So, that, so that, that would be a single issue, special meeting to deal with that.
Special meeting of the board would take place on the sixteenth, is that correct? Is that the motion? Okay, and then no connection to our regular meeting on the nineteenth, unless there's some carryover action or something.
Well, I have a conflict on the sixteenth, so I have a major problem with that on a legislative issue. But, yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, everything, you know, that we've, we've heard Mr. York recommended, no changes to the protocols, our head nurse, our task force, our Hays County epidemiologist, the medical professionals in our community, sixty percent of our faculty, you know, they've all asked us to keep these protocols in place essentially for the remainder of the school year for all of the medical reasons and things that I am not, my professional, I'm qualified to determine. But I, that's why I look to be experts too, especially on something like this, to provide guidance to this board. So, I, you know, I have a, I just have a problem with us setting an arbitrary sort of future date. I really don't see a lot of things changing overall in the whole scope of, I don't, the whole scope of this in terms of, you know, our teachers, I would want to see a new teacher survey at that point. I would want, you know, I mean, because, you know, we have data here that already tells us, you know, a large majority of our, of our faculty at least would like us to do, to make them feel safe. And so, there.
And I would, I would correct in that statement for you. Not all of our local, middle, community feels that way. All the people that wrote feels that way.
Sure.
But we've had, not unlike our country, we've had a lot of different opinions across the board and our, our community is no exception. But the rest of it is spot on, how you describe it.
It's not an anti-staff motion. Jerel told us that we have that window of time for those on our faculty to receive both their shots if they choose to do that and wait in the period as well.
My concern with it is us arbitrarily setting an additional meeting on a Friday when we've already got a scheduled board meeting on Monday for one twenty-four hour period of additional class. I don't see any reason why that can't be on the agenda permanently. Or we have a meeting prior to that to be able to get that information, get the epidemiologist's report and what his recommendation is a little earlier in that week with a start date at that following Monday. But all of us have jobs. And my particular job is extremely busy on weekends, as you now know, Trump. And so, setting an arbitrary meeting on a Friday, on a Friday, when we already have a meeting on Monday, it, it just isn't, I do not feel that that is a good use of our volunteer time.
Well, not to mention, all of our staff that's assembled here, we have the expectation that they'd be at both meetings as well. And I just don't think that, that actually is maybe the, the best approach. So, I would welcome maybe So I would welcome maybe.
I am in support of reviewing and doing, I am not in support of having two meetings within a four day period.
Would you consider?
Meeting on Monday.
Just adding this to the agenda of Monday night and allowing them to present.
Same motion, but change the date to the 19th.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm fine with that. I still believe that, yeah, so I'm fine with that. I do want to verbalize that again, it seems like a pushback, a pushback, a pushback. And I do understand that Tracy, that's a very valid point. I appreciate you saying that, I really do, it resonates with me. So I'd be happy to, you know, yes, probably better for Tracy to make that as amendment to the motion instead of me having to restate the motion for the board.
Would make an amendment to Rob's motion if he will accept it, that we, instead of having a separate meeting, that we add this to the agenda of the regular board meeting on the Monday, the 19th.
So for clarification, is the motion that we are simply going to reconsider this on the 19th and look at information at that time? Or is the motion that the mask order becomes optional at that time? I'm, I'm confused because you originally stated that. So I just want to be clear that the amendment is that it's for us to review with the intent of having discussion about making the mask optional.
It can go either way depending on the, you know, what, what the board feels. The next day could be masked or unmasked, mask could be optional, nor we're going to vote in this school year as a, as a jury.
Okay, so if we're just basically saying that we're going to look at it again at our next regular meeting, at, at, basically at this time, we're not comfortable, you know, changing things.
You're not comfortable.
Well, whatever, my point is that what you're saying is you want to look at it beginning of April.
I, I want to, I would make a totally different motion, but I, out, out of respect for
What they're saying, what our staff's recommending.
Our champions really, really let us, I understand that April 16th. Now I've, there's a fact more days because I infer with my colleagues over here, so.
I guess my, my point is I don't think we need a motion for that. You can just request that that be on the agenda for the April meeting.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so we can vote on it, you know.
Uh, before we vote, could ask like a couple comments. I hesitate to do this because we've asked so much, but I don't want to do it. Ken, we put some meat on the bone going into this next meeting, meeting. What metrics and what, what are we going to be looking at? Because I think, I, I feel very certain, I hesitate to speak here, but everybody wants to get out of this. Question is how and when do we get out of this, right? I made y'all, I gave y'all a layman opinion that I had, I just kind of made it in my head, we'll get through this school year, go into next year. I think there's a sense of urgency to, to perhaps move that, that time period forward some by, by a lot of people who are, and, and by board members on, on this board. But what, what are we going, what are we going to base that off of? What, what are we going to use? What can y'all help bring to the table? Look, I want to get to that place. I, I think we all want to get to that place. Help, help us get to responsibly, get to that place is what I'm, I'm trying to say if that makes sense. I think Ken in his amendment to Rob's first, I want to put words in your mouth, Ken, but yeah, I mean, you were, you were trying to find some type of metrics, right? Like, in other words, my words, if things were going crazy in Hayes County and Waverly at that time, you're not going to be supportive of that. Correct? If things have gotten a lot better or better or maintained or whatever, again, whatever, where, where are we going to draw that line? Then you would feel comfortable moving more of an option.
So you're looking for threshold?
Something, I mean.
What's got to be different from right now?
Um, something that, that we can, you know, evaluate. I, I get to give an extreme example, if, if COVID spikes again in this, in Hayes County, in this community, between now and, what was it, Rob, April 22nd or?
19th.
April 19th, April 19th. I don't even know what I asked you. April 19th. Then, 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 you know, obviously, I think all, I think the community, I think all of us going to have an opinion on that. That may be, may be different than what we shared today or, or in, in the vice versa. Again, just to say something extreme to, to make a point, if COVID is, it no longer, it looks like some of these West Texas counties or San Diego counties a month from now. Well, that, that's, that's easily a decision the other way. It'll probably be somewhere in between. But I'm trying to find out where that is and, and how we tried to responsibly make that decision. Because I, like, I'm sure all of you are, you know, ready to get back to the ball. Move that direction, but to do so responsibly.
I, I can, I can, you know, I can do the math for you, you know, and I could present some data. I mean, I put together, you know, Zebra just find out, like, I'm just trying to make sure I won't get that getting emotional and not telling you what to do here. And I put a little bit of math together tonight, you know. It really, I just put that down because I wanted to see for myself, what are we looking at? You know, because when you look at the dashboards for Hayes County or Waverly or whatever, there's some cumulative averages, but, you know, and you see some waves, but it, it's hard to put Hayes County and Waverly, are we really following along where they are? Is this really what we're being, what was there?
How many times did Eric make that comment?
It's always past your own average.
We, you know, we've got a little geographical buffer. We, we all, you know, we feel a little better, you know, it takes us a little longer to get the fluid because we're on 535. But what, what we saw, you know, so there's a couple of things that I did. I looked at, you know, seven day averages and also case load because hospitalizations and stuff drag behind us to see if they're going to, you know, we had this real precipitous drop. And then also I kind of went back all the way to August to look at kind of a date, the middle of each month to see, you know, where were we? And so on 7/20/20, the seven day average for cases in Hayes County was like 38.3 per day. And that week, Waverly had five. It's hard to do the seven day average in Waverly. It's just not enough of us, you know? And that number went, you know, August, it was 21, September went 18.9. Then Sep, end of September went to 14. And, you know, what happened was we started up here when we put it in place at 38.9 and then it came down to like 14 or 15, covered there. Kind of had a safer number. And our numbers from how much we had that week, they just followed a similar pattern, right? So Hayes County, you know, we started school here and we kind of, we did a great job. You know, we started school earlier than everybody else, but we kept our bigger kids out for a couple of weeks. And by the time they came, the number was just at the lowest they were all year, you know, prior to July. Not, not county, and that when we were all locked in our houses. So it's just like, you know, like, anyway, because it went down and then stayed low and then they start creeping up in October and then, you know, ten. And sure enough, that's exactly what happens. It's got, you know, October's like 19 and then 22 and then November hits and we're at 62, 102 in the, in December, 147 in January. And our numbers go from 10 to 27 to 55, you know, following that same curve. And then it starts to go down with a really great drop. It goes from 147.9 seven day average in January, on the week of January 20th, down to 61.9 seven day average the week of February 22nd. And Waverly, we go from 55 cases that week in January, down to 25 cases that week in February. And then March, we're down to 31.4. Hey, that's a little lower than when we started school for Hayes County, but we were still at 15 in Waverly. Took us a little longer to recover than the county. And then last, we were 25.4 at the county, we're starting to come down to that September 19th where we want to kind of get down low. And we're only five cases in Waverly, but then guess what happened last week? The county went up from 25.4 to 29.9 and we went up from five to 11 in the city. That's why there's this little nervousness, right? Those numbers. But we can do those numbers and we can come up, you know, I can talk to Eric, that's not my real skill set, but I can talk to Dee. She's really good at those kinds of things. We can come up with some metrics that we used to bear from Hayes County and my numbers. Put something together that gives you what we hope is a good solid picture of what's really going on and difference between the program.
One thing I just want to say is there's a huge contingency of people out there who want us to talk about this and, and consider. And I think that we should do that and look at it and see where we are. What does the data say? I mean, we've had these things, now we know what the variant is. We're all really nervous about what's going to happen after spring break. I know I am, you know, and by that time, we have some of that information. And now we can talk to our constituents and say, you know, we've gone over this, we've looked at it and the numbers look really good and we feel real comfortable with it, maybe we could do that.
Most of our staff is vaccinated.
Yes, and the staff is vaccinated. Or we might say Hayes County's gone crazy, you know, there's 15% of Hayes County has COVID and there's no way we could do that. But we won't know. But if we just go, no, we're not even going to talk about it, then we're leaving a large group of people who don't have a voice anymore. And I think that we need to give them a voice and it needs to be here in this room right now. So it's not that I'm one way or another, it's that there's a lot, a lot of people who are asking for this. And I think that we deserve, I mean, I think that we have a responsibility to hear them and talk about this and get the information that we need to make a really informed decision. If I had to make a decision tonight, I'm not informed enough, I promise you that. I need to know what's going to happen after spring break. I need to know what kind of variants there are out there. I need to know what level we're at, at Hayes County after the spring break. So I think the 19th gives us an opportunity to get past some of these things that we don't know and give these other people a voice who really want to be heard. I promise you I've got more emails from people who would never email me about anything else, ever. But they feel really strongly about this. And for me to go, I'm not listening to you, I just got to do this thing over here. I think that we at least need to give them the right to hear this on the 19th.
Well, I don't hear anybody, I don't hear anybody saying that we're not. So if somebody would second my amendment, we'll actually have it on the agenda.
Yeah, we do need to second the amendment. So the amendment's been seconded, just, just a little bit more discussion, give everybody a chance to speak.
No, I was just going to, I want to, like Ken was saying, this is not just an issue of a lot of people in our community. The 40% of our faculty and staff is a significant number. It's not 60%, but that's not a small number. We're not, we're not talking about very small minorities here.
Yeah, I think that sometimes groups get couched as a small vocal minority and this, this is a very mixed group of people. There's people that I deeply respect on both sides of this issue that have contacted all of us, you know, over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, it's, it is important that we put a lot of thought and we, I really appreciate this team. And obviously I've said it many a time, how much we've been able to accomplish this year. I share Will's sentiments and just it's been amazing that we've been so successful. And that I think is a really important thing for the public to, to understand and I know they do. And, but I know we're all tired of these stupid masks that are awkward and they don't fit right and they're hard to deal with. You know, so maybe another suggestion or thought is, is there some sort of kind of compromise where maybe the kids wear them moving around, but once they're in the classroom, maybe can they take them off? I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not the one that can really make recommendations or suggestions like that. But I just would ask that we maybe be open minded in terms of other, you know, scenarios that, that might work. You know, depending on where the numbers are, but if the numbers, you know, continue to, to, you know, be low like they are and all that, you know, I really would, would welcome, you know, sort of a, a recommendation as to maybe being able to, to remove the mask altogether. But again, I'm going to let this team lead as, as we have and, and that's why we've been successful and we appreciate it by here. So I think that's our motion second, any further discussion?
Quickly add something Joe said, I mean, is there any way to capture the value of filter ratios? As I understand, most schools don't have those, you know, I realize it may be difficult to capture that, but there's a value to add there, right?
Are those being utilized in every classroom?
We do have a test coming up, I'll get with Eddie and I'll email you guys or text you what date that is. We might even have them come out way before.
Is this thing even, oh, does it not make any?
Yeah.
We turned it off.
If it was going, getting with it, they would hear each other.
Oh, all right, that's what I, I'm right.
That's sort of the issue that I've heard as well, is that these machines aren't being utilized because they are loud. And that's, that's a problem in and of itself because it's sort of a false sense of, of safety. If we've paid for them and we installed them or haven't installed them, but they're in that room, they're supposed to be in the ceiling, right? But anyway, that they're loud, that, this is just the word on the street. And so that, that's a concern separate, it's sort of related to this. I mean, I, I just want to reiterate that, you know, our team has made a recommendation to us that we are essentially pushing, I guess, down the road and, and or that the motion is to, to not follow that recommendation at this point, but to look at it again in a month and see where things are. I, again, after reading all of these comments from our community and frankly, I don't think we've heard from the entire community on this issue. I think the vast majority of people in our district expected us to, expect us to sort of stay the course through the rest of the year. And if they think that's not going to happen, that we're going to, we're going to hear a lot more on this issue. Obviously, we're going to hear a lot more in the next few weeks if we're going to look at this again, which, you know, that is what it is. I just, I feel again, like if we have one staff person that is at risk and can't get the vaccination, for whatever that reason is, that we should err on the side of caution to protect those people, whether they're a student or a staff member or their families or whatever that is. And keeping this mask thing and all these protocols in place helps to protect those people. And, you know, it's a, they don't have a choice. So, you know, this issue that has been brought out by some members of this community, and I know that they're passionate about it and they believe, you know, what, you know, they're sincere in their beliefs as well. But I feel like we have, as public servants and volunteers in this community and people who are charged with, you know, the safety of our students and our faculty, that we should be erring on the side of caution here. And I feel so strongly about that.
Well, Lori, I think you know, I've taken this, this issue pretty seriously, as members, I think we all have. It can't be perpetual. I mean, there has to be an end in sight. You come, you know, if there was just one person, you know, you can take that, in which we're all insensitive to and, 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 and struggle with, with managing the balancing, right? There's going to be one person in some circumstance for the foreseeable future. And I'm not talking two months, six months, I'm talking years into the future. We can't maintain this two, three, four years down the road. And I think that the base, I know, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I, I'm, I'm trying to express where, how a lot of other people feel in this community that that is just going to continue to be a slippery slope, right? That's just going to, the ball's going to continue to get, the goalpost is going to continue to get moved. It's going to continue to go down the road. When we get vaccinated, everybody has to vaccine, you know, it's something else, it's something else. That's really the cusp and what's at the, at the soul and the heart of what people have been telling us uh, over the past few weeks, in my opinion. And, 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 and so somewhere we have to, we have to be comfortable with a responsible level of risk. And, and we're trying to figure out where that line. we're trying to figure out where that line is drawn. We've done that throughout the year with the help of our team. Um, you know, they're, again, look at a lot of other places, they're not even in school. So we felt comfortable enough, we took a level of risk of bringing our kids back to the school under certain conditions. Now we're just reevaluating what those conditions may be as things change in in this little living, breathing issue and and timeline and if, we're just trying to reassess it, but this I think a lot of people are are feeling like they're in a perpetual state of 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 an emergency that they see no light at the end of the tunnel. Um, right or wrong, whether you agree with them or not, I think a lot of people feel that way. And so trying to 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 find that line, as difficult as it may be, I think is what we've been doing as a team on this board and what we're trying to continue to collectively do.
I mean, and I, I'm talking about like April versus May. I'm not talking about for, so just, you know, just
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm talking about end of the year.
But that same situation you described is gonna be there.
I don't know.
Fair enough, fair, fair enough. I think it will be, but fair enough. Alright.
I'm, I'm, so yeah, I, and I appreciate that. I mean, I, again.
So Mag, transition us maybe to a vote on this. I've got a few other things on the agenda. You know, I'm not trying to take away from what this issue is to our community. We have a motion, it's been amended, uh, on the table. Um, hearing no further discussion, on favor, face the right hand. Okay, I'll post. So we have a, a vote of six and one abstentions, so. Take a break.
So, um, given, um, the, uh, the board's approval uh, to revisit this on, um, April the nineteenth. We really do need to, um, amend, and this document was approved by the board, so the board needs to amend. And it's on page fourteen and the, uh, it's called Protocols for Personal Protective Equipment, which includes masks. So down at the bottom, there are three bullets, okay? You guys approved these three bullets. We, I, I need to, um, amend this. Effective March twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, WISD COVID-nineteen Task Force is suggesting the following change. On page fourteen, these three bullets. Bullet number one remains, teacher will address student to wear face mask appropriate, appropriately. Bullet number two will be removed, so the nurse is taken out of this because we will be doing something different. We'll, we'll make sure it's not a medical reason. Then if the student remains noncompliant with campus nurse, or we'll take that out too. If the student remains noncompliant, the student will then be sent to the assistant principal's office. And this is what we wanted to say. The administrator on campus will call the parent for the, uh, students there to comply with the health and safety protocols and the reopening document. The administrator will ask if there is a medical reason why the student is unable to wear the mask or face cover. If there is no medical reason, the student will again be offered a face covering to put on. If the student fails to comply, then the parent will be asked to pick the student up and take them home for remote learning. If the parent refuses to pick the student up, then the child will be placed in ISS for the day, remote learning. This will take the chaos out of the library, which this is a critical time for the library. And this is in compliance with our Level One Student Code of Conduct. Now, at the secondary level, what the process that's been in place ever since I was even high school principal is at the secondary level, after three consecutive ISS, a student may be considered uh, for persistent what the process that's been in place ever since I was even high school principal is at the secondary level, after three consecutive ISS, a student may be considered for persistent, consistent misconduct and placed in AEP in accordance with the WISD Code of Conduct.
Same.
Second, so we got a motion in a second.
Is this the three day?
Lori made the motion, Will seconded it.
The three day? Wait, is that discretion or is it just automatic? As I understand, and I believe this to be true, our team has tried to work with every single particular condition that an individual student has had, uncomfort, whatever it may be. Is that, is my understanding accurate? Continue to do that until all options are spent. And, and so I'm asking that three day.
Are we talking about the secondary school comment?
Yes, or that, I mean, is there some discretion there? Or, or does that just automatically occur?
So what?
By somebody of authority.
What we have done in the past, and Jason, you need to make a comment, or Greg?
I'll let you go and then.
Okay, so nine times out of 10, after the third time, someone's been noncompliant with any part of the student code of conduct, we have always called the parent at the third time and said, look, you're still not in compliance. And so the only other avenue we've got is AEP. Now, there has been discussion that every single day they go to ISS. Well, you're not, you're still creating the same chaos that we had for three days in the library. And I don't want that to occur in ISS.
Don't we have typical isolated ISS rooms?
Yes, we do.
It was that way when I was calling the school, isn't it?
But you lose privileges in ISS. You lose, you lose the ability to participate in athletics at.
Right.
You lose, yeah, you lose several things in ISS.
Which, which.
And we didn't want to do this because when we, when we created this document, we spoke for a long time of why we did not, and watch girl, shake her head, why we did not want this to be a discipline issue. We spent a day on these three bullets. We really did, one full day on these three bullets, just to make it a non-disciplinary. So we followed this because y'all approved it and we wanted you to approve it. So we followed this protocol, but then it caused chaos in the library. It really did. And I just, you know, we've got to have a safe learning environment. And this is the only way that it can be accomplished is this now has to become Level One, nothing different, Level One of our student code of conduct. And that's, that's essentially what we're doing. We're turning it from, what did you call it? Compassionate compliance is the term that was used, okay? It's gone from compassionate compliance to, we gotta deal with it from the student code.
And the result of our last motion brings this issue to.
So this will move until you make a decision on this being effective through April might. And really, I would prefer it to be effective, well, April might.
Do you mind reading it one more time? What do you want us to do?
Sure. Email it out. Kind of change everything.
Yeah, so we changed it while we had this meeting today. And so bullet one, teacher will address the student to wear the mask appropriately. If, if the student refuses, it'll go to the assistant principal. And the assistant principal will then ask him, is there a medical reason why you're not complying with the mask? Or face covering? If there is no medical reason, then the assistant principal will ask him to put his mask back on, go back to class.
If a kid had like a bacterial, bacterial infection that qualifies.
Sure, I mean, any medical condition. Because we have kids like that. We have kids like that right now. And so we definitely want to know, is there a medical reason? And then if not, the mask, they'll be asked, put the mask back on.
We're trying to do anything we can to keep it.
Absolutely. And then if the parent would like to pick them up for remote learning, that's an option. But if we can't, you know, if the parent can't pick them up, then their placement would be ISS.
For that particular day?
For that particular day.
We had a motion in a second. We're discussing this now, any further discussion?
I think, I mean, just heard a lot from our teachers about the disruptions that this situation has caused and that we need to provide our administrators and our teachers with a way to keep order and to keep the learning environment safe and keep these kids, you know, doing what they should be doing, which is learning.
How big is that?
I think that we're seeing maybe fewer kids in there. But what, what it, what has really also occurred is kids that didn't even give it a second thought. Oh, wow, I can take my mask off and I can go on the library. Well, then we'd call their parent. You tell my kid to put his mask back on and get his rear end back to class. Okay, so we were dealing with that. And it just, you know, we were following the rules in place that we, that you guys had approved. And we found out the hard way that it's going to have to be, it's going to have to be a Level One in our, in that manner after, no, after we, you know, exhaust all avenues.
Can you give me an example of way in which child, whether it be, this issue kind of specific, I guess, to certain circumstances, but way a child could appropriately protest that this type of decision? You don't have to answer that, jump, mind directly. I mean, think about it. Obviously, some kids want to express a position, whether they agree with it or not, they want to express a position.
Will, if I may interrupt on that one thought, I've got some administrators back here. I want, if there's anything they would like to add. I mean, I just, I mean, you know, I'll just say this. Yeah, I grew up, my dad was a commander in the Navy. He set some rules for me that I didn't always agree with. I played sports. There was things that I didn't want to do in, in school or whatever. But if those were the rules, those were the rules. And so if we approve this, and this is the rules that the kids are required to follow, I would have the expectation as a, as a parent, you know, as a school board member, that these rules that need to be followed, or there's, there's consequences. And to say that there's ways to protest or all of that. I think we've seen that, and that's been very disruptive. And that's where I was kind of thinking the administrators might provide a little color on that if they wanted to, or, you know, Dwayne has already. But that's, that's kind of the motion that's, that's on the table. And I think it's been seconded, we're discussing it now.
Just to be clear, Joe wasn't talking about continuing the current type of protest. Trying to find an alternative way in which perhaps somebody could express.
I think they can write letters to you. You're the ones that can change this, not us. We can't change this. DEA said, it's up to you. And so they can write letters to you. And so.
I just, we've already seen it a bunch tonight. We heard a lot of great students explaining their position on that. That is the avenue right there. Over the years, we've had students say, I don't agree with the hair color, just, or I don't agree with how short our shorts should be, or whatever. And so my response to that is always, the school board sets that. If you have a disagreement of that, you need to go to them in writing. And of course, before this, it would be, they could come and, you know, speak.
Right.
But, but that's, that's your avenue right there. And I, I think that's, that avenue is there. But to choose the avenue that has been chosen has created the chaos that's being discussed.
It's all my kids talked about when they come.
And what can you, for the public who are still with us, and maybe for some trustees, maybe still here, raise Joe, put some color on the chaos in the library. Well, you don't have to be as detailed as you might like, but help us wrap our mind around.
Just as far as the junior high goes, the logistics of what we're dealing with is that we've got great kids and great families, and our kids behave. And they follow the rules, day in and day out. So if there is someone that's creating a little bit of a problem for us, out of 620 kids, it's three. And so that's a very small group that we have to address an issue with, or, you know, some challenge with. When it becomes 30, that creates the chaos right there because that creates just the logistics of taking care of a group that is not complying with, with the rules. And so that creates problems for teachers because how would you give them their assignments? And then also, you've got to put them in a spot where they're trying to zoom, in this, this case, with teachers, but they're also in a setting with a bunch of other students. And so where you might typically have a classroom that everyone's paying attention now, maybe they're being distracted by others around. And so you have to hire more personnel, let's get some more subs and to try to deal with a big group like that. So that, that's the frustration. And then also, just quite frankly, the frustration of students on campus, Will just said it. His daughter's coming home and saying, this is what's going on, and that's created that. Yeah, right, what's going on with, that's, that's our case.
And I started out with 30 kids in the library, fifth graders, on Wednesday. And the first child I talked to had a mask on and cried, he didn't know what to do. He wanted to be with his friends, but his parents would be present. And he did not know what to do. So in every, in every case, I said, let's call your parents and talk to them. Let's not let them help you make this decision. Couldn't get a hold of the mom, so he went out, back out and waited, talked to two more parents, two more kids, two more parents, you know, gave them a whole scenario. Then fifth, because we had a different schedule that day, because we were doing my writing, fifth grade's going to specials, they all see their friends, gets wet, they throw on a mask and went. Because they don't want to be in there, they want to be with their friends. But they were in there because they felt like they had to. And then I've had a, I've had a fifth grader for three days now come to me and say, my dad says, I can't wear a mask, that I'm not supposed to wear a mask. I said, well, what about a facial? I don't, that's what I want to do, but I don't know what to do. So I have to call his mom and get, you know, let him hear that that's okay. He's torn up. He is torn up. I talked to many, many children who cried about this because they did not want to be within that other classroom. They want to be with their friends. I have 10 kids who are consistently in that classroom who want to be in there. But I started out with 30 fifth graders. And then Thursday morning, when I dealt with fourth graders, I probably had 15 where I called every parent. And so some, some parents said, go put your mask on. One parent said, why don't you go to that other class? And the little girl says to me, can I go say goodbye to my teacher? I said, sweetheart, this isn't forever. Your teacher will come see you. So this, you talk about emotional, you talk about social and emotional pain? Yeah, this is, these are 10 year olds. And so, you know, Mr. York asked me, because we were talking about, do we get a panel together? And he said, what about fifth grade? And I said, 10 year old think what their parents think. And so, you know, they're pleasers. They want to please their friends, they want to please their teachers, and they want to please their parents. And so the chaos is what, not only the teachers having to get work together, make sure they have enough, make sure we have their problems, make sure we have their court, make sure we have their head. Make sure we have, you know, all of that. And Ms. Lyles and myself and my assistant principal have been the ones in that classroom because I do not feel comfortable putting an unvaccinated person in that classroom with, that goes against our policy. It, it goes against our policy. So the administrators and your director of special services has been teaching that class until today. And, and so, yeah, the chaos that I see is in the children. And we had them write about why, you know, what made you make this decision? One couldn't even verbalize it, only drew a picture. One said, because my parents made me. One said, because Jesus made, is making me. And one said, because my, because I don't want to wear a mask. And that was, you know, that's, that's your thing. So that is the chaos I'm talking about. It's not just the chaos that my staff is going through and the other children are going through, but what these children are doing.
For sharing that, any, any other comments?
The high school's probably more like a junior high in terms of, you know, sometimes they were not coming down with a mask issue, but coming down with a test that was that period. Would want to start that process in the middle of the day when they had, earlier in the day. And then had to ask an administrator to be in the library all day, not doing many of their other tests that need to be happening. Attendance, credit recovery, and a lot of other things that should be happening that are kind of on hold as a launch for students in the library.
Okay.
I'd like to chime into that because I've been covering this class there. Last week, there were some suicide ideations and some self-injury that needed to be checked out for, whether it was suicidal or non-suicidal ideations that I did. That's what I do for the district and was, you know, not able to do my normal job duties, which are very important.
The foundation of what I can do as a nurse is based on that relational trust. And I really count on parents work in partnership with me, with kids. And while every child was polite, there was no, there's politeness. When, when you tell somebody, I'm ready for you to do this, you know, for health and safety reasons, and they say, no, I'm not going to, that erodes trust. And then, and I'm concerned.
Thank y'all for your comments. Very much appreciated. Discussion.
Is there any other, and I'm sorry, I'm going to speak up there real quick. Is there, if, if, is there a way to achieve what we want to achieve without going down a disciplinary path? I mean, ISS just seems so extreme when we started with this idea of compassionate compliance. And I, I understand that we're out there right now, there's transmatic chaos. Is there somewhere in between that we can achieve what we need to achieve without going there? I think they tried over the last week and a half and didn't work out. So, I mean, his kids can go to ISS for pink hair. So this seems like a far, you know, this, this action has greater consequences for public health than that. So I don't think it seems too extreme, considering all the other rules we have in place, all the other infractions that a student could do to land themselves in ISS after getting talked to several times. So to me, it doesn't seem that extreme. I mean, we created these protocols, our staff, we didn't create them. Our staff and our team created these protocols for a reason. They didn't create them in a vacuum, they created them for a reason. And they need help to manage the situation in the real world of the classroom. And I think we need to give them the tools they need to.
And we're absolutely against ISS. We do not want that under any circumstance. And we're absolutely against ISS. I, we do not want that under any circumstances. I want to avoid that. That's why you have a conversation with every single parent. Not interested in doing that. Be much easier to just put the mask on, or if you feel that strongly about this, just go home and do remote learning and and just do that. And we want to avoid that, but this is where we are after when we told this is our protest. We will do this.
Discussion. Just want to express great appreciation. Thank you. Means a lot. Okay, on favor. It's like that's unanimous. Are we okay to continue? Let's go to the number, item number four on our agenda, our consent agenda. This one will be an easy one. Motion to accept consent agenda with amended minutes. Do we have a second? And Rob seconded, on favor, raise your right hand. We've had a couple of people hanging in here with us, one being our director of transportation, Owen. We're going to move to item five, which is our two thousand eighteen capital project fund.
So we're ready to close out this this bond. And so we have worked with Bob and double, triple, quadruply checked every single number on this spreadsheet. The final thing that that Bob is going to be coming to you with is listed down at the bottom of this spreadsheet that I sent y'all today. It's the unpaid retainage and unapproved contract change orders of forty nine thousand five hundred and fifteen, okay? So we know that everything is on this spreadsheet. So to help you read this spreadsheet, if you'll go to the line that says two thousand eighteen, it's in bold, two thousand eighteen bond, fund, balance and go.
Give me a second to get.
I'm sorry. And if you go to the blue column, you'll see one point four million. So that's how much money we had at that particular time. Now, there is two projects that we have not completed and they're listed under other projects. So the land for the baseball softball parking lot, we made an offer of one eighteen, five eighty. Okay, I have not heard back from them. Okay, plan on calling again, find out about that. The athletic storage building, we're doing the, getting the site work ready for that. And then this summer, we'll be putting in the junior high band storage cabinets. Now, here's some other needs that we need. And so before I do anything, I call Richard Donahue and I sent you his email. And Richard Donahue and I went line item by line item on everything that's on this spreadsheet. And so the at the track needs veracoded so that we're not having to replace that thing. That's a seventy five thousand dollar expense. We could use another maintenance truck. That's thirty five. Here's your high school band uniforms. We can also spend this excess on that for forty. And then everybody's aware that we have two buses that were in accidents this year. And so we can even replace those two buses. Owen's here to explain any of that if you need it. But notice, even after doing all of this, we would still have six hundred and thirty one thousand left.
I have a question. I I recently became aware that the new primary school that we perhaps have not yet purchased the kiln for the art room that we voted to purchase, that we had a donation towards. So can you explain why that, can we?
Yes.
Has that happened yet? Or what's up with that?
Okay, so Bartlett Cock, one of their, when we were wiring it, I think it's during the electrical work. The art teacher said, we don't need it yet. And he said, well, I'm just here to wire it. It got taken out of the project. We have plenty of money. It's only like three grand, so we're ordering it. And it should be in there really quick because we've got donation of clay from.
We also have a cash donation at the time of that. And the board may have formal approval, a motion to do that, so.
And so why it got taken out, I I learned, you know, just just recently.
Already is the, my question is, do we use part of this balance towards that or was that already?
It just it just didn't hit this list yet. But that's that's definitely on the list. I just wanted you to know that we still have the six thirty one. And the reason why Owen is here is because there's a one hundred and eighty day out on getting new buses. And so your recommendation would be to.
Yeah, just, I miss your saying it's roughly one hundred and eighty days by the time we put in the order till we can expect to see delivery. And, you know, like I said, we had, we've lost two buses just just this school year due to accidents. And I'd like to at least replace those two buses and I know we talked about possibly another SUV also. You know, looking forward to next next going in the next school year. And also going in next school year, you know, especially the mask go away, you know, like everybody wants COVID goes away. Is there still going to be social distancing on on field trips and athletic trips like there has this year? So that's going to be the a need to get these buses, get this order placed, these buses, we can have those in August.
You're asking for two replacements and an additional bus to meet volume needs anticipated.
Yes, well, two buses to replace what we did lose this year, possibly another SUV to add to what we have.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and purchase the two new buses. I don't know anything about the SUV, but definitely I'm making a motion to buy two new buses.
And I'll add a friendly amendment to that.
So can I ask about the band uniform? Because there is, he needs time to get those by time of football season next year.
Did we want to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second on the buses. Any further discussion?
We could.
Is the maintenance truck separate from the SUV that you were talking about?
Yes. So what we were, what we were hoping you would approve is everything in the yellow.
Okay.
Everything in the yellow is what we would, what we would like for you to approve.
I'm making my motion to make a motion that we approve everything.
Second, there you go.
All right, good. Motion second. Any further discussion on that? No, on favor.
Go ahead. We discussed this a little bit last time. I just want to get clarity. In a school, in in typical school district budget, buying something like like uniforms, I know we're all tired, I'm sorry. Kind of, we we scheduled uniform purchases, like law enforcement, for example, through our O and M every year. You're saying that using capital funds is very typical of school district budgeting and not managing this in your annual O and M anticipating these these needs coming right through our.
Usually anticipate that they're going to replace them. You put that jurispr- jurisprudence on the balance budget. In this case, we have some nice sponsors in the in the bond that are allowable costs. And that's why we want to take him home from this bond at this time. But that's what you would usually do. Any cost that you are currently I mainly more than I hear.
Life in these uniforms are what, Tracy, are you?
Well, well years. With duct tape.
I mean, if if if. If we have a two year life, we should be putting a capital expense, we should be putting them in. Expense, but if it has something like that, I can.
It doesn't have to be a risk for capital expense. You can respend the funds and just assign a general.
Anytime we can knock it in, in the know, buddy.
All right, good discussion. So we have a motion second, on favor, raise your right hand. Good. That's all we have on item five. We'll move over to item six, then our report section. Are you okay with that? All right, six. Health and safety report sent to us, the CFO's report, Mr. Santiago. Yes, please.
So just the main points here, we have already. Here, everything here is going, it's just going to be down to the P O as far as revenues concern. Our expenditures will continue to be the same since we spread our payroll throughout the year. So our operating expenses will be one less about two point one million per month. As far as the revenue, we have reached the highest nineteen point two in the fund balance, which is equivalent to nine months of operations, operating months. This, the total cash and investments, total two, thirty million point five of which the bank will make sixty seven percent of the total amount and the debt service twenty two percent. Have the tax collections we have collected about ninety two percent of the total levy. So even though they have increased, we have already. Those are the main areas. The child nutrition program is still, we have experienced. Student life. There's still. If you don't have any questions on that one, I'd like to present the fourth investment report. As of the end of February, we have already liquidated all of the capital funds from the investments, T C G accounts, and we have already drawn them down into our tax accounts just to mean cash flow business. So, but we have mainly invested in what T C G accounts are for your general fund and your debt service accounts. This quarter, we averaged a balance of eighteen point eight million with an incentive rate of return of point seventeen. That's still very low, but that's the best we can do at this time. At this point, I don't think investing longer than a year would be a good thing because we, majority of our debt service payments are due before August, so I have to make sure that we have enough liquidity just to make those investments. We will continue looking at other investment options or opportunities that come up within the next months. But what we are foreseeing is that the debts will continue to keep their for the this point, at least for the next two, one to two years. So it's not as much investment return that we can get out of our investment portfolio for you. And that's the best we can do considering the economic circumstances.
All right, great. Well, that includes that item, so we'll move to our superintendent's report.
So I've already done two of the items that I was going to do in my report. The only thing in addition to that is Thursday, March twenty fifth, Moises and I will be on a it's called the the critical budgetary session, kind of like Zoom with Region thirteen. Everybody's anxious to find out what's going to happen with the, how the federal stimulus money is going to be allocated to school districts, what that's, you know, really going to go for. And then just moving forward with our budgetary process to twenty twenty one, twenty two. The legislative session is is moving pretty rapidly. And so we're hoping to get some clarification on, you know, what we're looking at, making sure that House Bill three is still intact and those items. So looking forward to that that soon.
Okay, very good. I don't have anything to add under the presidential board. So we'll move to item seven, which is our executive session. And I'll read this. The board may adjourn into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one. The board may then reenter into open session for further discussion and necessary action. Deliberation may include security devices or security audits, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven six and five five one point zero eight nine. Personnel matters, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven four. Hires, term nominations, employee discipline, approval of non non renewal, approval of renewal and non renewal of standard and probationary professional contracts and superintendent's evaluation. Liberation regarding real property, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven two. In consultation with our attorney, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one. The time is ten forty four. Let's take a five minute break.
I would move.
Right hand? Will. Okay. Any other motions?
I would move that we, uh, we accept the contract renewals for each campus, including special, special ed department as presented.
Second. Motion to second, discussion, on favor? It's like that's you. Okay, do it, Jared.